Welcome to the December 1st, 2020 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers, and if you'd like to speak on anything today, please fill out our speaker request form. It's on the back of the bookcases as well. And Ms. Holly, to the left of the dais here, you can hand those to her, and then we can have you speak today if you'd like to speak on any items on the agenda. First, we'll have a moment of silent reflection, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Mark DeSanto.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Ms. Holly, if you'd like to come up and do your addition.
Good morning, Commissioners. At this time, I would like to ask the Board to add item 8Q, which would be to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on December 15th for Budget Supplement SP 20-027 for the TIF number four fund and budget.
Say that what it's for again, Ms. Holly.
Schedule a Budget Supplement hearing at the next Commission meeting on the 15th for SP 20-027 for TIF number four.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of the agenda with the Budget Supplement hearing December 15th.
Second.
Motion by Drew, second by La Croix. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, recognition of new employees. We had at 8:30 today. We have a lot of new employees, and we welcome them as Commissioners. We are pretty proud of how many people here are joining our team here at Pennington County. We have some pretty awesome employees coming. We did find out that a lot of them from Pennington County right now are coming from out of state, so that's pretty awesome. Commissioners, do we have anything to say on the recognition of new employees?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd just like to take time to welcome you guys all to Pennington County, and I'm sure you're going to find that it's a good place to work, and the department that you're in, you'll find that it's comforting and family-oriented, and we really appreciate you guys choosing Pennington County for your place of employment and probably your retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews, please.
It was interesting visiting with them because we had them from Southern Florida, Southern California, Portland, Oregon, and there's a lot of them that actually are right from this area too, so it's good seeing them, meeting them, and I know that the Chair has indicated to them that we're available if they have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Department of Equalization employee recognition. That'd be Mr. Shannon Rittberger.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this. I'm Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I'd like to ask Trevor and Dawn to step up here. The appraisers that are in my office and anywhere in South Dakota are required by state law to be certified as an appraiser-assessor if they have anything to do with placing a value on a property for assessment purposes. That means some classwork and a test before they were within the first year that they work for Pennington County or any county in the state, and then every year after that, they have to maintain continuing education, which requires testing every year after that. So after quite a few years, you have developed quite a list of courses that you've taken. Our office in Pennington County pushes our staff, maybe requires our staff, to continue to take progressively more difficult classes. So you can work for 10 or 20 years, and you don't take the same class over and over again. Some counties do that. We don't do that here. That's required at a minimum for the job in our office, but we do have some appraisers who go above and beyond that. They have to do that for their job, and what prompted this is Trevor has maintained his certification here, but him and Dawn both have professional designations with a South Dakota Association and an International Association. Then Trevor has got certified, or I don't know how to say it, to teach the appraisal courses that our classes or that our staff are required to take in these classes. He teaches these same courses. He was just recently asked by a consulting firm that works with counties across the country to teach for them, so instead of teaching for himself, he's going to teach for them. He does this in his spare time. Dawn and Trevor have acquired these designations in off-time. It's a lot of work at home, and Trevor just taught a class in Casper. He took vacation time to teach a week-long course. Now, that's the same kind of course that I will have to sit in. There's a possibility I'm going to have to sit in the class that Trevor teaches someday. Dawn has the same professional designations. Dawn is also a licensed real estate appraiser outside of our office. She is qualified to do appraisals. She doesn't. She works for our office, and R3, who isn't here, he's working from home now because of the virus thing. He's one of our staff that works from home all the time. He has an appraisal certification and had it for many, many years. That license that Dawn has and the certification that R3 has are not required for the job. These are examples of our staff going above and beyond, and we have a lot of new staff right now, and there are several of them that are working on these professional designations as well, and I just wanted an opportunity to stand up in front of the Commissioners to brag about our staff and point out that it is not a job that you just show up for and go home at night. You have to maintain this continuing education, and most of them even go above and beyond that, and we are fortunate that they don't go somewhere else and use those qualifications for a job somewhere else. They actually stay and work for Pennington County.
Thank you, Shannon, and they work for you, and they're still here, Shannon. Shannon is very detailed boss, so just watching over the years, Dawn and Trevor and just your group has been pretty amazing because some of them, the people that have been here, were new, and then you're just watching every year their progression. So you know, I'm going to have to say something nice about Shannon, that their boss is very detailed and does care about their people because he's educating, Shannon's educating you guys and letting you guys move forward in your job descriptions in every way you can and not being offended thinking, okay, these guys are going to know more, these guys are going to be able to do more, I'm not going to be able to do what I need to do. Shannon has always pushed education, 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 and just from seeing you two and what you guys have done in the last few years, I'm very proud of you. It's pretty amazing how much work this takes to do your job. That's the crazy thing. People don't understand how much work it takes. I've taken one class on taxes for a few days, and that was enough. So very educated group you have, very amazing group, and what I like about your group is the team. The team is always, you're always laughing, you're always doing different things to keep each other where you need to be. You're very helpful to each other, not like your boss, just kidding. No, but I always tease Shannon a lot, but I'm very proud of him and very proud of your group, and we are, as a Commission, just watching. Again, this Commission has watched you over the years, the progression that this team has made, and again, Pennington County, we have new employees, and then we have the experienced ones, and you two are above and beyond that, so we appreciate you very much.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd just echo Ms. Hickock's sentiments, but I also want to say, I mean, for our new employees, this is one of the things I forgot to say, the progression of being able to learn your job and go above and beyond and do, gets them the training that helps out not only you personally and your family, but also what you guys have done is went above and beyond. I do have to say, Shannon's been teaching some of the classes at the state level with us and county Commissioners, but I just really appreciate Trevor and Dawn, the hard work that you guys have done to do it, to get where you are today. And just on a personal note, I've known Dawn for probably 20 years, and from where she started, you know, back in her twenties to where she's at now is just amazing, and I'm glad that you guys put in that hard work to get where you guys are.
And Trevor, just one thing, be hard on him because you know he would be if you was teaching him the class with you being in it. So remember, anything you can do would help us out a little, just kidding. Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd like to congratulate you guys for your extra effort as well, and I also, I attended their Assessors Convention two years ago, and it gave me a whole new appreciation for what you guys do to place fair values on the properties that you go out and assess every single year. I know you get a lot of heat, and I just know that after attending that Assessors Convention, I can see that the formulas that you use and the formulas that you choose to use are what you need to be able to properly assess and fairly assess the values of the properties here, and I have a great respect after that convention for the job that you guys do. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I just want to say, as a professional appraiser that I've been in, across the state of South Dakota, in a number of DOE offices, and the excellence that I see exhibited in our county and your office, it excels, and I see it in your employees, and when we do our assessment appeals, I really enjoy working with the employees. I'm learning as a real estate appraiser, I'm learning a lot about assessing, and I'm glad to be part of the team, and thank you, Dawn and Trevor, for your contribution to the DOE office here in Pennington County.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Drews.
Me too. Appreciate what you're doing above and beyond, Dawn and Trevor. Trevor, just a reminder, just because somebody signs up for your class, doesn't mean you have to accept them in the class.
Shannon, you're getting lots of crap today.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it. Pennington County should be proud of the staff we got, not only in my office, maybe primarily in my office, but other offices as well. I have experience working for another county, and I've been in other counties too. Pennington County should be very proud of the employees that we got everywhere here, and I appreciate the Commission, what you do to make that possible.
You picked a great team, Shannon, so thank you. Next, we'll have the consent agenda, seven through 10. Ms. Holly.
Okay. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board, items to be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Number seven is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 17th, 2020. Number eight is to schedule the following public hearings at 9:15 a.m. on December 15th for the following budgets. SP 20-11 for Emergency Management Fund, SP 20-12 for General Fund Law Enforcement, SP 20-13 for General Capital Project Fund Jail Laundry and Kitchen Remodel, SP 20-14 General Fund Jail, SP 20-15 General Fund Weed and Pest, SP 20-16 General Fund Natural Resources, SP 20-17 Accumulated Building Fund for the 2010 B Series, SP 20-18 MacArthur Fund State's Attorney's Budget, SP 20-19 Accumulated Building Fund 2010 A Master Refinance, SP 20-20 Accumulated Building Fund Capital Improvements, SP 20-21 General Fund Abuse and Neglect, SP 20-22 General Fund Court Appointed Attorney Budget, SP 20-23 Accumulated Building Fund Capital Project, SP 20-24 General Fund Elections, SP 20-25 General Fund John Tiva Kervich, SP 20-26 Accumulated Building Fund Stalling Barn Project, and SP 20-27, which will be the TIF number four fund and budget. Then, number nine is to authorize the following operating transfers. The first would be the General Fund assigned to Emergency Management Indican Care Fund to the Emergency Management Fund in the amount of $126,820. Accumulated Building Fund to the Capital Project Fund in the amount of $500,000. Accumulated Building 2017 A Fund to the Accumulated Building Fund for $23,740,000. And finally, D is the General Fund to the Accumulated Building Fund Capital Project Budget in the amount of $547,000. And finally, number 10 is to set the 2021 Board of Commissioners' meeting dates.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there anyone from the public who wish to pull any items seven through 10? Not if there's any Commissioner who would like to pull any items seven through 10?
Number nine, C.
Nine C from Commissioner DeSanto. If not, can we have a motion seven through eight, and then how about everything else but nine C?
Make that motion.
Motion by Drews, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Nine C, Commissioner DeSanto.
I just think since we're dealing with such a large amount of money, that it might be a good idea to have Cindy get up and explain that Accumulated Building Fund, how it works, where the money came from, what the bond is all about.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. I need to go find that memo. I don't remember which one it was. Back in 2016, the Board of Commissioners did a refinance, and that was the 2017 A-issue bonds. That money has been held in escrow. It's been making its interest payments, and then as soon as it was ready to, or I shouldn't say, at this time, it's got enough money in there that it's going to pay off the 2010 B bond, so that is why that large amount has been sitting on our books as debt and as cash.
Yeah, okay, and we're not adding that, we're actually retiring a bond and transferring.
Correct. That's exactly what's happening, is we're retiring that 2010.
$123 million. We should probably talk about it a little bit.
It's a rather large one. It's a bookkeeping thing.
Right, very good. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve nine C?
So moved.
Second by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10, to set the 2021 Board of Commissioner meeting dates.
Is that part of the consent?
Oh, the consent, sorry.
I'd make that, I'd make a motion to approve, to set the Board of Commissioners' meeting dates.
Well, you already did that as part of the consent.
So it was part of the consent.
Sorry about that. Number 11, sealed bid opening. Ms. Holly, are you opening, or? Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Okay, Commissioners, at this time, we are scheduled to open sealed bids for a tax deed property, which is described as Lot 4 of Brock subdivision. The Auditor's Office did receive three sealed bids for that property, and we will go ahead and open those now.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Cindy, can you tell us the process, how this is done, so people know in the audience? Is it Janet or you that?
Janet.
Okay, I was going to have someone describe how basically this process works, unless you know, Ms. Holly.
I can certainly do that. This is a property that the county took on tax deed for failure to pay property taxes. At that point, it goes on our tax deed list, and then the Auditor's Office holds an auction when the county has enough property to make it worthwhile to justify the cost. This is a property that an individual came in front of you earlier this year and requested that it be declared surplus so that he could have an opportunity to bid on it. The process is if it's under $500, the Board can sell it privately without notice. This property was appraised at more than that, so the Board has the option to put it out for auction or have a sealed bid, which is what we have done today. Statute guides the Commission in options of what they can do to have it appraised. The Board chose the three real property owners. They go out and inspect the property and assign a value of what they feel it would go on the open market for, so that process did take place in October, and here we are today after the required publication notices and time to sell it.
So we take the highest bid?
The Commission can take, yes. If you do accept the bids, it has to be the bid of the highest.
Okay, thank you.
How many bids do we have?
We have three. We do.
Thank you for that description, Holly.
Yes, ma'am, and for a little bit of a notice for the Board, the Equalization Office had the lot appraised at $20,000. The individuals, when they went out to the property, had agreed on an $8,000 price, and that was what was published in the paper. There were some challenges with this lot based on where it's located. There's a fence from the neighbor that is over onto this lot. There's a utility easement that runs on one side of it, so the three individuals that were there that day felt that that $8,000 would be the amount that it would, a fair amount for what it would go on the market with that.
Madam Chair. Commissioner DeSanto.
Question, Holly, did our Equalization Department take that into consideration as well when they did the appraisal?
I don't know that I can answer that, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Holly, if we don't accept any of the bids today, then what's the next course of action?
I believe we would start the process over, or the Board could hold it for future, for another public auction.
I just wondered what the course would be if bids are, you know, if we don't feel the bids are fair.
Okay, first bid I have is from Daniel Scherer in the amount of $12,000. The next bid we have is from Keith Hatula in the amount of $10,051.00. And the third bid is from Lori Christian in the amount of $11,650.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. We do have someone in the audience who would like to speak after Ms. Holly.
Okay, so at this point, it looks like the high bid is in the amount of $12,000 to a Daniel Scherer.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Sir, would you like to come up and speak? Give Holly just a second to be done with the dais. Thank you, Ms. Holly, for opening the bids. And just state your name, if you would, sir.
Keith Hatula.
Go ahead and come up. Thank you, sir.
Yes, in 2012, I bought the lot adjoining, it would be Brock III, it's $39.50 twilight drive, and when I bought the property from the real estate group, was who the agent was, I put a bid in on the property for one amount of money, and then they were asking $119 for my lot. I gave them $120,000 because they were supposed to give me a contract deed on the second lot, on Lot 4, which the bid is for. So I actually gave them $10,000 more than I was going to give them for the property that I purchased. So Mrs. Fisher, who was our Hagaman Fisher, who was who I bought my house from, she never informed me. She called me, I think it was in 2014 or '15, and said, are you still interested in the property? And I said, yes. And she had Mr. Doyle Estes as a lawyer, and she acquired the property after her trust fund was set up, and it was originally set up in Suzanne Fisher, and her mother passed away, and everything was done except for the last piece of property that she picked up because she didn't think it would be worth anything to anybody but me, so she worked with Estes and they were having a problem getting the trust switched into her name. And I met the Commissioner's Office and explained, had her on the phone, and she explained to them that she would sell me the property if she could get it put into her name because she could not get it out of her mother's name for some reason, out of the trust, and she would be willing to pay the taxes on it and then set up a contract for me to buy the property. And they said that was not able to do without a lawyer. I contacted Mr. Estes, and he wanted her phone number, and then why, I didn't explain what happened, I just said his name, and he said, what's her address, what's her phone number? So I said I would contact her, and then she could contact you, and then I'd never heard about that or anything further on that. And I contacted Mrs. Fisher last week before the bids were due, and she said, well, Keith, I'm sorry if we can't get it put into my name so I can legally sell it to you, then just place a bid in on it. That's why I put the bid in for $10,500 because I knew it was appraised at $20,000. That would be what I was willing to pay for originally on the contract with my agent. Well, somewheres in the process of whichever, after three years, they throw all their paperwork away at the real estate group, so they have no paperwork staying that they would sell me the property for some amount of money. So here, I'm the landowner next to it, thought I was buying this property, and I'm taking it in shorts over $2,000, so, and I don't know why I never went to the courthouse, to the steps of the courthouse as a bid, or somebody buying the tax deed. I don't understand any of the process, I guess, so. I mean, I went in to give a fair, what I thought was fair, you know, which was the $20,000, so I feel, but without you guys having the big work in front of you, I understand that it's kind of difficult for all you guys, but I feel all these other people are about $8,000 low on their bid.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
But they would definitely.
Hold on, sir. Hold on, sir. Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
No matter, if we accept any one of those bids, my question, with my appraisal experience, is how do we treat all the other properties around that that are assessed between $20,000 and $25,000 a lot? So we have a $10,000 sale to $12,000 sale. That creates a huge inequity, and maybe Shannon can reach out and give us that answer because I can, if that sells for $12,000, the neighbor's being assessed at 20. If I was a neighbor, I'd be talking with Shannon, so it's just something I'd like to figure out in my own head.
That will happen and does. To answer Commissioner DeSanto's question, no, we didn't consider the problems with this property on our $20,000 appraisal. The law requires us to value all of the rights to a property, and we assess all properties under that assumption, but with this property, it's a sale of a property that was taken for taxes. The county will issue a quitclaim deed instead of a warranty deed, and we know that there's arguments with neighboring landowner and an encroachment of the fence on the property. All of those issues affect the sale here of this property, but we appraise it for property assessment purposes, assuming full rights and none of those. It would be for another appraiser to consider those issues, but they affect this sale and not the long-term value of the property. So we will get, we will get some property owners will say, why do you got my property assessed at $20,000 when one exactly like it just sold for a $12,000, whatever? And we could say, well, that sale, there was this, this, and this. There's always high sales in the market, there's always low sales in the market. And sometimes we can explain why they're high or low, and we can here.
True.
And sir, we follow a process here and when we follow that process, um, that's what we did today on this property. What happened to you in the past, I do feel bad for, um, what you are talking about. But we do have a process in which we follow, um, here at Pennington County in order to sale it as a quitclaim deed. So, um, unfortunately, I don't know, um, what we're doing, if we're accepting the bids or what we're doing today, sir. But, um, bottom line is, there was a process in which, um. Yes, sir.
And then, like, my address is thirty-nine fifty Twilight and it's right in the turning lane, which is right where the, because it's dangerous to back out into the turn lane. And that is right where the driveway is for that property too, to where it could be very dangerous for somebody to back out on the Twilight Drive into the turning lane. So they put my driveway on Jolly Lane, so I'm not eligible to access my property from the front. So I have to access it from the side. So how dangerous is it gonna be for somebody to back out of Twilight Drive from a property that's twenty feet away from where my driveway access is supposed to be? I mean, why would they change my driveway and not that driveway?
And you, you can come on, you can come and visit us on that and visit with our planning department or our highway department on some of that.
Okay.
Um, just to get more information and, and get the facts and, and what, you know, is going to happen or what should be happening out there. Or to work with solution and finding what needs to be done on your property. You by chance?
I would just like to make the suggestion that they landlot that property before somebody gets hurt and then they can put the driveway for that on to Jolly Lane.
Thank you, sir.
And I would give up an easement for a driveway approach there if I got this lot.
Thank you. And is your fence on the property or you don't know?
Fence was on the property when I bought it because I was under the influence that I was gonna purchase this property, which the contract never come up because commission will not take Geraldine Fisher and place her the sole trust for her mother.
So that was your fence that's on the property?
My fence, I have other stuff on the property too.
Just thinking that you're gonna buy it, that's why.
Right, because I've had my property since two thousand and twelve, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any questions for?
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeCroy.
Yeah, I, I feel bad for you with, with the agreements that were made and, and it's kind of putting you in our spot now, but you know, at least now you know that we followed the process. And so when this gets completed, y- you're gonna have to work with the new property owner as far as your stuff on there. Maybe you guys can work out a deal on the side, who knows? That, that's, I think that's a, a good option for you is to, to work with whoever gets awarded with that and reach out to them.
See, maybe they'd sell it to me for the difference. But what I'm, um, confused about is, I'm not a lawyer. Um, why cannot the property from Suzanne Fisher, when the, her whole trust went to Geraldine Fisher, Hagaman, replaced, why cannot that property be placed into her name? She's willing to pay taxes on it and she's willing to go with the original contract.
Yes, sir, we don't, we don't deal with, you know, the lawyer stuff here as a civil case, sir, but, yeah.
You know, I, I think the commission is the one who would be able to take it out of the trust from her mother and place it into her.
Legally, legally, sir, I can tell you, we can't do that.
Okay.
So, then unfortunate circumstances that happened to you and because of all that, but this, that's not what this board does, sir.
Just the reason she has problems with it is she said, I already spent five or six thousand dollars on a lawyer for this property and it's getting nothing done. And, um, you know.
Thank you.
The contract would have been for about twelve thousand more dollars, so.
We appreciate you coming today, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd make a motion to award the sale of tax ID number thirty-nine six thirty-one to Dan Scherer, uh, per the sealed bid received in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. And to issue the deed per the conditions detailed in the public notice of sale, and that's a quitclaim deed.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
Second from LeCroy, do we have discussion?
Madam Chair.
Um, we'll have Commissioner DeSanto and then Commissioner DeSanto.
Um, oh, sorry.
No, you're first, sir.
I'm just, uh, uh, I, I, I don't remember who asked us to do this, um, at the, at the time. I don't remember if it was Mr. Hatula, uh, that asked us to put this, uh, on the, basically on the market, declared surplus. Um, but I think that, uh, in what I'm hearing, that twelve thousand dollars is a, a fair offer. And so I, I would fully support, uh, selling that to Mr. Scherer.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Commissioner DeSanto.
Madam Chair, I, uh, being that is my district and I also lived in that neighborhood for quite some time. And I'm very familiar with what properties, how quickly properties are selling out there. Um, and, uh, I think there's properties right around that area that have sold for more. I believe we've got a chart on that. I think that it, that we should not take the bid at this time and put it up for bid again. I believe that we will get a, a better bid on it. There's a lot of demand in the valley for property.
Um, thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Holly, um, we started this process, can you tell me the date? Um, bottom line, when did we make the motion to go into this process? Was it six months ago, was it three months ago?
I'd have to double check, I wanna say April or May.
Yeah.
Okay.
And with Mr. Hatula, he did come into the office and I gave him about a month to bring in any paperwork that he had to prove ownership. Because we didn't want to move forward with this if we were going to have additional issues, um, and he wasn't able to do that. And I did specifically speak with the, the owner, the prior owner on the phone. And she was very clear that she didn't have the legal authority to sell it to him and that's why she quit paying the taxes on it. Um, so we are where we are and, um, it, it was Mr. Scherer who approached the commission back earlier this year about moving forward with surplusing it, so, um. It's been quite the process to go through and make sure that everything was done properly and legally and, and that, that lot does have some issues. And planning is working with Mr. Hatula in the event that he did not get the successful bid to have that fence and the other items removed from that lot.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. So the process was followed and it started in April and now it's October. I know the market is higher now, but there also was a process that I believe we follow and it has been followed. We're the ones that put this up. We could get more money, we could get less.
Don't think we'll get less.
Right, but, um, for me, I, I think I'm, I like the process and I like the way the process has worked, so. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
So three ayes, I'm aye, and two noes, motion passes. Thank you. Item twelve would be proposed West River, Missouri water project. Ms. Cheryl Chapman. Good morning, Ms. Cheryl.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Cheryl Chapman. I am office manager for Banner Associates, which is an engineering firm here in South Dakota. And, um, uh, and wanna say that Dan Malali, who is the program administrator for West Dakota, is unable to join us today, but obviously available. Uh, just a bit of history on, uh, the topic for today. Um, West Dakota Water Development District, as you may know, has a geographic boundary of Pennington County west of the Cheyenne River. It was formed in nineteen eighty-four when the conservancy subdistricts were dissolved by the state legislature. Um, when that happened, the, the Black Hills Conservancy Subdistrict Water Right was transferred to West Dakota. That needs to be renewed on a periodic basis. And during the last, uh, time that the renewal was coming up, West Dakota said, do we want to keep this water right? And it's called a future use water permit. And so the, West Dakota turned to South Dakota School of Mines and Technology and said, please do a study for us to tell us whether or not we really need to be thinking about Missouri River water. And the slide that we have up right now is the proverbial, a picture's worth a thousand words sort of thing. It comes straight out of the South Dakota School of Mines study. And what they concluded was that, yes, it's in the interest of, uh, West Dakota, Western South Dakota, to look at additional water sources. Just to describe this, um, graph then, the bottom red line shows water availability, what's available to use for the residents in Western Pennington County in times of prolonged drought. The middle green line, that's horizontal there, is under normal conditions. And the blue line at the top is during extended wet periods. And then you have the solid and then dashed line that is upward trending, which is the population in this area. And what the study showed was that in the year twenty twenty, for example, if you look on that bottom axis and then go up, the gap between the red line and the, what the demand is for the population actually shows a water deficit. In other words, if we were in a prolonged drought right now, we would probably be faced with water restrictions and the like. And so when, uh, West Dakota received this report about a year ago, right now, they, uh, took it, read it, and then turned to us at Banner Associates and asked if we would take this information and see in fact if there are other partners in West River who might be interested in working together, uh, to really explore bringing Missouri River water west river. And so we did two things for the district. One was first call a number of communities, tribes, counties, and water systems throughout Western South Dakota. And almost everyone except one district that had just been formed and felt they had a good water supply, said, yes, I'd be interested in having a conversation. Of course, we weren't asking anybody to make commitments of any sort right now. And, and once everybody said, yeah, let's sit down and talk, then over the fall, we have held four meetings with those stakeholders to talk about what it would mean to embark upon a major water project. And so we had folks from South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems. We had, um, the professor at the School of Mines who took the lead on this study. And other experts talked about what it meant to have those kinds of projects to begin. And then we had a series of discussions with South Dakota D E N R, Department of Environment and Natural Resources, with USDA Rural Development and with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation to just find out what programs are available to help support this kind of a project. Obviously, um, a multi-million dollar project if it were to be fully implemented. And so with all of that information, the folks who met informally in this stakeholder group, um, had the consensus to take it to the next step, to look at a new organization, um, to be formed hopefully in the, in twenty twenty-one. It would in all likelihood be a nonprofit organization, much like many of the water systems that we have in South Dakota. And then, um, the group and at the request of the subcommittee from West Dakota, asked us to say, what would be the next steps? And we reported back that it would be a more detailed needs assessment where you would go from community to community and really understand what are the current water needs, what would be projected future needs, what's available and what's the delta, what else is needed there. And so, uh, as West Dakota has considered it and they have voted, they have a two-voting, uh, system. And so they voted in their November meeting to proceed with a needs assessment and have asked us to do that work for them. And we'll have a second vote in December. And they are looking to the different communities to say, yes, we would be interested in participating in that needs assessment. I should hasten to say, we're not asking, here asking for any money at all. Um, uh, but that cooperation, working with you, your staff, on what the needs are in Pennington County would be part of that commitment you would make in support of a needs assessment. And so that is why we're here today. I should tell you that we have letters of support, uh, from the city of Buckstelder, the city of Rapid City, Deadwood, uh, Rapid Valley Water System will be providing one as well. So we're just gathering those up so that the, uh, West Dakota can see that, yes, indeed, should they proceed with a, uh, a study, a new needs assessment for Western South Dakota, that in fact, the partners that are out there would be participants in that.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl.
Madam Chair.
I, um, went to one of your meetings and I apologize, I had a meeting on the second one, so I apologize. But, um, when I went to this meeting, um, I was pretty excited that we're looking ahead here in South Dakota, let alone Western South Dakota. I think what's gonna happen, once you see the trend, is you're gonna have Colorado or some other state that's gonna need our Missouri Water River. And when we need it for South Dakotans, which are finding out in Colorado and other places, um, most of that water isn't for people in Colorado, it's going to other states. So I believe in Western South Dakota, infrastructure is one of the goals of this, uh, commission, I believe. That, that is a huge, um, vision, a dream. A dream always becomes a vision when we make it happen. And for me personally, I think it'd be the most amazing thing if we could, uh, tap into some of that Missouri water and bring it to Western South Dakota. Because could you imagine with all the different cities and the different places? Even in Mead County, it's not just about Pennington County and anything further Buffalo and the different counties in Western South Dakota, what water, um, could do for the different cities if they had more water source? So I think something, uh, moving forward for a needs assessment for a start, but, um, if I could tell the governor anything, I think it'd be amazing if she could make it happen for this, uh, water tapping into the Missouri River, like I said before, um, somebody else does. The other, um, thing Cheryl is how much extra water, basically, it's, it's pretty substantial how much extra water goes in that Missouri and goes right straight down to other areas. It's pretty huge, isn't it, Ms. Cheryl?
Yes, it is. And of course, it depends on the year, but, uh, millions of cubic feet per second, it, it ends up being over a long period of time. And, and, uh, and so the idea, I, I don't want anyone to think, um, the ten thousand acre feet of, which is the future use water right, is just a very small amount of that water. And so, um, there's not a competition right now, but the West Dakota did go ahead and renew their water right, if I didn't finish the rest of the story, so.
And there's a lot of different things to get water rights and what that means and how much that entails and who gets the water first and all that kind of thing. It's the most interesting, uh, meeting I've been into, uh, a long time. But I, I would hope anything we can move forward on this, uh, this Missouri River water project, um, would be a good thing. I also heard years ago that, um, a couple of years ago actually, that the reservation on Ogallala, I thought, was tapping into some of the water for some of their infrastructure. And I was very happy to see that anything that could help the reservation and infrastructure as well would be, be pretty amazing if it was some of the Missouri River, in order to move them forward, I thought would be great. So again, uh, they're ahead of us on some of this game, but, uh, maybe we could learn from some of the things that they have done as well. Commissioner DeSanto.
I would reflect your sentiments and I also, you know, we've talked about water shortages and, and planning, housing developments and so forth in the Black Hills around the possible future need or future deficit of water that, that may, uh, be happening here. around the possible future need or future deficit of water that that may uh be happening here. I think it's important for us to get to know more about this subject. So I would make a motion um.
Hold on just a sec, we have another speaker then if you'd make that motion.
Okay.
Commissioner DeSanto. Commissioner Drews.
Uh Cheryl, thank you for coming and presenting this information. There's probably nothing more critical than good clean water uh for all of our areas. And I know it's a long, a long pole from the Missouri River over to this area. But at the same time, I think we'd really be remiss if we didn't move forward with looking at the needs assessment and figuring out how this can be done in the future. Uh the need is definitely going to be there, there's no doubt about that. So thanks for bringing this forward.
Madam Chair.
Um Commissioner Roskinick.
Huh? What's the closest distribution center uh relative to, this is a Rapid City, that uh gets Missouri water?
You know, I think it's Wall, actually. They are at the very tail end of Minnewachoni. And uh so it can travel a long ways west. And then, of course, there are other projects east river that go long distances as well.
But if we, if this became reality, would we just basically come from Wall to Rapid?
Well, that's a great question. It's, we really are not sure yet. And so that's part of what some of this work is, uh to really understand where the needs are, where the water is to date. For example, um uh the Minnewachey project up on Cheyenne River has an intake, a new water treatment plant, and takes water to Eagle Butte. And they have looked at going both west and north. And so there's a lot of discussions to be had. But a lot of what would, will drive it is where is the water needed and that sort of thing.
Well, thank you.
Great question.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I would move to approve the chair's signature on the letter of support for completion of a needs assessment for the Missouri River water for Western South Dakota.
Second.
And a motion in a second. I also like to recognize Cheryl Chapman is a ex-commissioner, county commissioner. So um did a lot of work for Pennington County and did a lot of positive work for Pennington County. And now you're moving forward and hopefully, not that you haven't helped our state in any other way, but um this would be a huge project. And if anybody could get it done, Ms. Cheryl, it's you.
Well, thank you so much. And I want to just, I enjoyed watching the equalization discussion, you know, and thanks for your continued investment to make sure it's being run right. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You have a good day. Item 13 is a lien release request.
Commissioners, I do not see the applicant in the audience today. He was notified two times.
Two times, okay.
Move to deny.
Second.
A motion to deny in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 14, please, Ms. Cindy.
Good morning again, commissioners. Seems like I'm kind of on the agenda a lot today. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Monitor, we have a liquor license. Um actually, this is a retail on-off sale wine and cider license for BJ's Country Store on Highway 16 that we would request approval for.
Okay, so these are the motion for the on-sale. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
By LaCroy. LaCroy. Can he make the motion even if he's abstaining on one of the issues?
Oh, is that?
This is, this is actually the one for BJ's Country Store, the retail on-off sale wine and cider. It's, it's not the.
Oh, it's the first. I apologize, Commissioner LaCroy. I was on, I don't know why I moved to the second part. So there'd been a motion by LaCroy, who was second?
I, I second.
Roskinick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Sorry, Commissioner. And this is the renewal of the retail on-sale liquor license. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinick, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed with one distinction. Commissioner LaCroy.
That's on the next one.
It's the next one, yeah.
He, he didn't abstain from this one.
We're doing three.
Okay, so I have A is the new retail on-off. We voted on that, right? And now we're on renewal of retail, this one, right?
This one here is the one. Wine and cider.
Yeah.
Am I missing something? Because this, this is the first motion, right?
Okay. This is just on, we're on to the on-sale right now.
What I'm saying is we need a motion for this one. We need a motion.
We did that one.
We did the liquor. Proved out.
Okay, Holly, I got. I have a motion to approve a new retail on-off wine and cider license, BJ's Country Store. LaCroy, Roskinick. Then I have a renewal of retail on-sale liquor and Sunday license. These go together, is that what you're saying? And we don't do another motion?
You're doing the first one for the new retails.
We already got that one.
It's a new one.
Now you're doing the renewal of the retail with all of those.
Where he has to abstain.
Lloyd would abstain because corner pantry number 21 is within that one.
Okay, so that was Roskinick and Drews made the motion.
Okay, that is the way it shows on mine, but.
Okay, I apologize.
Minor, minor reverse.
We're just having a mix-up on this.
There, there were a few.
And that was renewal of retail on-sale, and then LaCroy, the motion would be made by Roskinick, second by Drews. LaCroy's abstaining, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is the renewal of the retail on-off sale wine and cider licenses. Am I correct, Ms. Cindy? And this should approve the renewal of retail on-sale liquor licenses with Sunday sales unfolding, release license upon payment of appropriate property taxes.
That's the list that starts with the Central States Fair, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion on this one?
I'll move to approve, assuming that they pay their property taxes.
Moved by Roskinick.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Uh point of order. Uh according to mine, we actually missed one, one, yeah.
We still have one more left, Commissioner Drews, after this. We just, I think my agenda is.
May 4, we still.
Yours is different than my agenda.
And I apologize. That's why I'm kind of reading the.
Okay.
One, sir. Yes, sir. So Roskinick and DeSanto approved. Did we say all in favor already? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. We passed that one. Now we're on renewal of package off-sale liquor license Johnson siding general store, right, Ms. Cindy?
Yes, ma'am.
And that'd be the last motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Roskinick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So you should have one, two, three, four motions, all made, under the licenses. Okay, did we miss it?
No, it was just not that, in that order on my agenda.
I apologize. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Um and we like seeing you all the time, Cindy. You help us a whole lot. Thank you. Items from the sheriff, policy revision for 12-hour shifts. Your name, sir?
Good morning, Commissioner. Madam Chair, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff's Office, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh the sheriff wrote a pretty detailed memo to you outlining our request today. We've been evaluating 12-hour shifts in the law enforcement division in some of our correction facilities. And to do that appropriately, so it doesn't, it doesn't uh build overtime into the schedules, we'd need to make a change to a 14-day work week option, which is allowable under the Fair Labor Standards Act. So the sheriff has outlined uh the verbiage that we would uh request in the motion for that 14-day work period.
Can you explain the 14-day work period?
Yes, but to make 12-hour shifts work, each, each week is not a 40-hour week.
Okay.
So we look at a two-week time period and get 80 hours in the two weeks. Otherwise, we'd be 36 hours some weeks and 44 hours some weeks in those schedules.
Okay.
So the 14-day work period fixes that for our employees. It lets them incur overtime the same way the other employees do after the two-week period is over. But doesn't automatically cost the county overtime in the weeks when they work 44 hours.
So you guys work 12-hour shifts?
We do not right now.
I didn't think you.
With, with, with this language, if you guys approve this, we would be offering this in some of our areas in January this year.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Can I ask, sorry, Commissioner Drews, can I ask, how do you do the 12-hour? Is it a 12-hour day or 12-hour?
It's a, it would be 12-hour days.
Okay.
And then each one of our divisions, depending on staffing, would be set up just a little bit different, where they would work. You know, one of the schedules we're looking at is three 12-hour shifts and, and then with an option on your fourth day to work four hours or to take that as holiday or vacation. And then on another shift that we're looking at, over the two-week period, you'd work three 12-hour shifts, and then one of the, one of your fourth days, you can come and work an eight-hour shift to meet your 80-hour requirement.
So just a question, if I work 12 hours, do you get how many breaks? I mean, how, how does that work? So 12 hours is a long day.
12, 12 hours is a long day, but we're hoping to use this for a recruitment retention tool.
Right.
Uh because we would not mess with people's three days off at the back end of the days that they work. And right now, people are coming in, especially when we're short in our corrections, they're working five-hour days and they're coming in, a lot of times working overtime on their sixth day right now.
And you're getting a younger gen, I'm, I'm not against this, I'm just thinking in my head. And you're getting a younger generation where their time is huge. I mean, not that all of ours isn't, but there's a little bit different clientele coming in for work, workforce. But I just didn't know how, I know, like, I think the first, a lot of the first responders, a lot of this happens where they have the 12-hour shifts or two days on, two days off. So um not against this, I just thought, well, if I had to work 12 hours, I should be quiet because I do work 12 hours, but you know what I'm saying, how that works for breaks and.
Absolutely.
Your job and what they do is very tedious.
Right. And our, our plan, if you, if you approve this today, would be to do a six-month trial period and then reevaluate with our staff whether that was something that was working for us or not.
It'd be interesting to see how that works.
It will be.
I don't know whether they're going to love it or not, but.
Right.
Commissioner Drews is first, and then Commissioner.
Make the motion to approve the 14-day work period exemption policy addition.
Motion by Drew, Drew, second by LaCroy.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy, please.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I spent over 20 years working 12-hour shifts, rode, rode touring out at the plant, and then also working 10-hour uh, 10-hour shifts. And the pros and the cons to it are, you know, as Ms. Hancock had mentioned, you know, what about the breaks? You know, we follow the same breaks to 10, 15 minutes to the half-hour lunch. And in a production line, there's some pros and cons in yours. But the benefit, I think, what, what I found for our employees that were doing the 12-hour shifts were uh number one was vacation time, the time off needs. You know, you'd work two on, three off, two, three, depending on how you guys set it up. And also the, the use of uh vacations for employees, it kind of works out good for them to a fee. The vacations are usually, I don't know how you're going to do it, set up at eight hours, you can take the 12. But you can gain some more time off that I think rejuvenates the employee, could take you more off. And I don't know how you guys are going to work those, those kind of details out. But I think, I'm glad to see you're, you're talking about a trial period. Some may like it, some may not, but I think, I think you guys can make it work for your, for your division.
Thank you.
Anything else? We do have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 16 is items from emergency management. We're having a nice slow day.
Good morning, Commissioner. Madam Chair. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Really won't take up too much of your time. Happy to stand for any questions that I might be able to answer. The COVID uh grind, uh the, the, the pandemic continues. We saw um statewide and in Pennington County, a, a dip in our, our daily active cases, which was uh relief and, and expected, although the last couple of days that started to uptick again a little bit. Whether that's in any kind of correlation to some of the testing efforts, I don't have that information. I asked if, if we could get a synopsis of what our mass testing events resulted in, and, and I haven't gotten any of that data. I don't know if I'll get any of that data, but I, I certainly did not receive um uh any of that information in terms of the, the specific testing, uh mass testing events that we had. Uh the mass testing event that we had in, here in, in Rapid City, Pennington County was over the course of four days. It was all day Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and then half of the day on Monday, uh primarily run by the National Guard with some support from a contractor through the Department of Health, E True North. They tested just over 2,000 people over that weekend. Uh and again, I don't have the results from any percentages or any numbers from those 2,000-plus tests that they did. Uh I do want to take just a second um to uh, uh again, just lift up the, the folks that we have and in Pennington County, the departments that we have in Pennington County, the people that we have in Pennington County. The decision to come to Rapid City was um kind of a last-minute decision. Uh they were scheduled to be down in Martin, and they didn't get the, the numbers of people that they thought would be, you know, worth the logistical lift to go set up their testing site. So relatively last minute, they chose to come to Rapid City. So literally within um one work week, just a few days, in coordination with search and rescue and uh the sheriff's office and the police department and absolutely the fairgrounds, Ron Jeffries and, and John Kaiser were, were, were incredible. Uh the, the county shop, emergency management, uh everybody stepped up. Uh our community emergency response team, our CERT members, uh who are just involved citizens that helped with some traffic control issues, because we had the turkey dinner giveaway from Feeding South Dakota at the same time. And so we had to manage two really large crowds of traffic coming to the fairgrounds um and try to get people where they needed to go and not waiting in unnecessary lines. But I just wanted to take this moment to say how many uh organizations stood up last minute and, and answered the call to logistically make that testing happen. Um and it was just really awesome to see all the yeses. When I, when I approached the fairgrounds, the answer was yes. When I approached Pennington County Highway, uh who did um a mobile message board placement and programming and signing and uh portable speed bumps and, and traffic cones and delineators. I mean, every person that I went to last minute said yes. And that's phenomenal, and just again, a testament, uh we heard it with Shannon, and, and then again now, uh just a testament to our, our people and our can-do attitude. And it was really awesome to see that all come together.
It's, it's kind of crazy that, that you hear about all the lines supposedly for testing at the, um, what do you call them? Urgent cares in Rapid City, and then we have a basically free, right?
Hmm, yeah, it was free.
Mass testing and only 2,000 people show up. I mean, we have 110,000 people in Rapid City. And if, it seems like if people were more worried about the virus or more, you know, some of the stuff, that would have been a sure sign of tons of people that, you know, were worried about, you know, what's happening with the virus. So um maybe I'm missing the boat here, but, and I guess why you're talking about it, that's why I'm saying it out loud is, it seems like if you have that many people, they'd want to be tested, but they're paying to have it tested at urgent cares?
One of our issues was, was time. Uh we, we only had a, a very short time to advertise. Uh so we didn't get uh the saturation. If we would have had, you know, a, a month, month-long advertising campaign, the results potentially would have been different.
But I told people to go that were worried, and they never went. I was at different organizations saying, we're having free testing and we're, we're good. So I, I guess I didn't, maybe I just had a different reading. That's my point of view, but Commissioner DeSanto.
Madam Chair, I think that a lot of that has to do, and Dustin can let me know if he disagrees on this, but uh if, if this would have happened two months ago, we probably would have had 15,000 people lined up. But I think we've reached a point of burnout, where people are just, they've had it with talking about it, thinking about it, doing anything about it. And, and I think that that's probably lends to, 2,000 people actually is, to me, quite a lot. You know, people probably came that maybe thought they had been exposed. The kind of people that probably showed up to this were, were people that felt like they'd been exposed or felt like they'd been at high risk. But I think that when, when we were at the peak of, I, I hate to say it, panic, two, three months ago, I think we would have had, have the town show up for, you know.
Well, it's just, to me, it's also, when you talk to people, is it 30 days that you can have COVID? Because the Department of Health's saying one thing and the CDC is telling you 90 days. And then is it, are you infectious for four to seven days? Or do you get a quarantine for 10, or you're supposed to be 14? I mean, we keep just flipping rules and regs and then, um, okay, I had COVID. So um I tried to do their little text to the Department of Health or whatever, um, never received anything. So then when I was supposed to be done quarantining, get my letter, the guy called me. And then uh five days later, another person called me and said, well, you're done. I said, no, you guys already called me five days ago, so. So, um, if they're trying to help this virus, that they're trying to have the panic and the craziness go away, there's got to be some rules because that's what, you're right. The rhetoric of it all is just making people madder than heck. Because there's no set rule. There's a, I, you know, you could have had it twenty days before, but you didn't get tested till ten days, but you could have been infected people for twenty days. And then, then there's their other side that maybe you never really did that. And pretty soon, you just sit there and go, I'm confused. So I can imagine, we are commissioners that can listen to the stuff all the time and get emergency management and Monument Health and everything else. But, um, what about the general public? And even then, as commissioners, we don't even know. So, and emergency management, because the rules are changing and what we want to do is changing, how do you follow a set of rules and regulations when you can't even figure out a virus? So Commissioner Drews.
Dustin, did any of the two thousand, did they have to show any symptoms in order to get tested?
Um, so the, the, the short answer is no. Uh, when you went through the online registration process, it, it wanted you to, to, to sign up the, the way the, the registration form was set up from E True North, uh, it made it appear as though, um, you, you should have some type of symptomology or some type of concern that you have an active infection of COVID-19. It, it wasn't a come-one, come-all. There was some, some language in the application that made it seem like you should be symptomatic. Uh, but the bottom line is you did not have to be symptomatic.
So do we know what the results were with those two thousand? How many test?
I, I've sent a couple of inquiries to, to, to people in various organizations and haven't heard anything specifically back. And I haven't seen any reports in the media. To address Commissioner DeSanto's comment, COVID fatigue is very, very, very real. To address, uh, Commissioner Hancock, Chair, Chair Hancock's concern, it is confusing because nobody knows. Uh, we're, we're still trying to sort out the science, so the guidance does continually change. Uh, the best that we can do is, is look to those authorities that are working with the best science and the best studies that are out there and just understand that, that guidance will change and, and science will change and information about the virus will change as we, as we understand more. Um, but fatigue is real. Uh, and, and unfortunately, uh, this is not the soapbox I should probably get on, but, but, but we're pretty good at, at being divided in this country as of late. And this is just another issue that people have become polarized and divided on. Uh, and it so almost goes beyond, um, health. And it goes beyond, uh, uh, infection control. And, and it becomes, uh, just another issue that people are split and divided on. And a lot of people have staked out their position, their, their camp uh, when it comes to infection control or virus. And so, um, all, it, it seems like it's not even about guidance or science or studies. It's, it's really how you feel about it personally, and, and that certainly you're right in this country. But again, we've, we've split into our tribes, we've split into our camps. Uh, and, and people are, are typically on one side of that issue or the other at this point with, with no real impetus to move off of that, off of that position.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews, or Ross.
One thing that I know today that I did not know six months ago, and this is fact, is I know I've had friends and relatives that have had the virus and now they're leading productive lives. So I think with, I think that's happened to a lot of people. So that total fear, I think we're just getting numb. And, uh, I can't watch the news without fifteen minutes of COVID. And I mean, to tell you the truth, I'm gonna quit watching the news, it's just depressing.
Yep.
The mental and the physical, we said that when it started. And the mental and the physical is just, okay, should I mask? Should I not mask? Should I, am I, um, going to infect somebody? Am I not gonna infect somebody? Pretty soon, you're just mentally drained from listening to it all. Because we listen to Sioux Falls, we listen to there, we listen to here that masks aren't gonna work, it's too late, you should have done it a long time ago and this and that. And then the next minute, oh, but you can save lives with it. But then the next minute, you, how can you save lives with the virus that you have no idea how it works? And then tell everybody like sheep, you have to, you have to mandate something and think people are gonna fall like sheep. Um, I'm sorry, we are not personal property of the government. If you want to mandate people, I, I think, okay, I'm giving my opinion, I think that's wrong. I think it's a personal choice. I think your property, you, um, I'm sorry, government, but I'm not your personal property to tell me that I need to mask mandate. Am I gonna be respectful because that's what kind of person I am? I'm gonna be respectful of people when they want me to mask. But I, I'm sorry. And then to tell people in government that you're gonna fine them up to five hundred dollars, that's, I'm sorry, that's just crazy.
So the three, uh, three last issues I'll leave you with of one? Nope, that's okay. That's okay. The, uh, it, it's, 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 it's our life right now and, and.
Well, Dustin, what, were you at the meeting last night? Because I have no idea.
I wa- I watched it.
Okay, where, did you?
So, no, no, no.
Okay, LeCroy?
I, I, I tune into the highlight reels and, and.
So what did their, their ordinance say?
From what I gathered, it's, is business, and I don't know the details. I was talking to Holly about this this morning because I missed the very beginning of the ordinance. It's changed, it's not a mandate. Uh, I think if the fine was down to fifty, but it's businesses, signage on the business, if, if the business requires it, post it on there. If it's optional, they post it and they follow, so it's posted. Uh, it, quite a bit watered down compared to what was talked about two weeks ago. I mean, there's no real stiff penalties or anything like that. A lot of the comments that were made was, why did you spend three hours talking about this and then water it down? Pretty much they made a compromise. And, and I have to admit, after watching the two weeks ago meeting of their debate and discussions on it, uh, they took the two weeks, the city council did, and worked together and, and took out some of the language and came up, they, uh, took out a place of worship. Um, they, 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 they come up to a good compromise that nine of the commissioners or council members agreed on and passed, only one voted no. So I, I, I get, without looking at it, I missed the very beginning when they read it out, but the, the, the mandate, uh, they tabled and the other, the, the resolution they tabled, this was something totally new.
So it wasn't ordinance, Commissioner?
Uh.
The second reading of a ordinance?
They're gonna have another second reading, yes.
So this would be the first reading and the second?
But as I said, it was quite a bit changed over. And quite frankly, I've watched the Brooklyn City Council meetings with the mandates and some of these stuff that's gone on. Um, I mean, there's great discussion, but Dustin just explained it. Most of what you watch is, it's my side or no side. And, and, and it's frustrating that, I think the council did a very good job of taming it down, the mandate and, and come up with a good compromise that they all agreed on, so.
Well, and I appreciate the, the news on that because for the beginning of listening to all that, it was just butt-nut crazy.
Yeah.
And not that I don't respect the city council, but some of that's just like, you're fear mongering and causing more mental and physical and people getting, just stirring up the pot more when you're not trying to find solution with people. So I'm not, I think we have a nice council, um, we have some really good people on there, but it just was, some of the direction they were going and, and the direction they were given, um, was unfortunate because this is a virus, it is serious, and we need to be respectful. But like I said, there's a point where there's respect and then, um, dictating, so.
So a couple of things is, is just to keep in mind that the, uh, regardless of, of, of thoughts and opinions, um, the stress on our frontline healthcare providers is real and the stress on our healthcare system is real. Uh, and even though we saw a dip in, in, um, active cases, uh, that was encouraging there. And I will also add that all of the, the CDC's ensemble model, uh, show that dip continuing, hopefully. Uh, obviously, everybody's a little bit on pins and needles to see what the Thanksgiving holiday brings in terms of spread. But, um, the ensemble model right now does show us continuing that downward trend, both in Pennington County, South Dakota, and as a nation.
And how about the, the vaccination?
Yep, so that's, uh, uh, just that last piece on the, on the hospital is, um, we didn't really peak, uh, with our active infections until, you know, about a week and a half ago. So we still have probably at least another, uh, uh, you know, few days to a week of, of increased impact on, on Monument Health before we see any type of relief. So, uh, that's one. Um, vaccinations is, is certainly the hot topic in terms of looking forward. Uh, some of this mass testing that was done, um, was, was, uh, done with good intentions, but also done, uh, to, to trial how we can logistically make that lift and, and move people. And, and, uh, we may see, uh, you know, a very similar setup when we move into some of the phase-three vaccinations for, for the population. Um, the, uh, there's a decision coming out, uh, maybe already came out, but coming out today from the CDC on some of the initial distribution, uh, of some of the vaccines that are available. Uh, what they're talking about, we haven't seen the final document, but what they're talking about closely mirrors the vaccination plan that South Dakota Department of Health published in terms of, of prioritizing phase one, phase two, and phase three. Who, uh, would get the, the initial doses of the vaccine and then subsequent doses of the vaccine? Um, but, uh, right now, those are all, uh, the plans on paper. And, and, uh, obviously with this dynamic, as all of this is subject to revision and change, but we're absolutely looking forward, looking, looking forward sounds odd. We're looking to the future for how we might facilitate vaccination programs.
So one of my, he's a city councilperson, his mother is in the nursing home and they are, said they would start vaccinating them December fifteenth.
So the first doses of vaccine, um, if everything, if everything flows smoothly with no hiccups, um, uh, some of the initial, uh, distribution of vaccine could certainly happen on the fifteenth, on December fifteenth. Uh, nursing home patients, that's one of the things that's being discussed today, is we know that our frontline healthcare workers need those initial doses of vaccine. Our doctors, our nurses, our caregivers, our first responders, um, uh, those folks need, uh, and, 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 should be vaccinated first. Um, uh, the question of, of then that next group and, and a lot of those conversations center around, uh, long-term, um, uh, care facilities, nursing homes is, is, is.
Mark.
Do we do that concurrently or just below? So again, how that happens has yet to be determined. But, but nursing home patients, uh, is certainly a, a very high-risk population in terms of having poor outcomes with COVID infection, uh, and they're relatively high on all the vaccination plans.
Thank you, Dustin.
Anything else?
Anything else? Thank you, Dustin.
Ms. Hancock.
Madam Chair.
I just wanted to clarify, it just occurred to me about how that ordinance. It's the first time they've done, Joel and Dean had made the comment, an opt-out ordinance. Well, and that's what, I think when I clarified, uh, mask mandate signage and optional signage on the door, that's part of the opt-out type thing. That it, that he, I, it just sticks in my mind, it's the first time he's ever done, he was asked if he's ever done an opt-out ordinance. And so that's, I think that's how they're working that.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Maybe Holly can send us all that ordinance so we can kind of see what they're doing. All right, item seventeen, thank you, Commissioner LeCroy. Items from Highway Department.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. Uh, item A is in front of you here is our utility certification. Uh, last week, we did hold our, our, another utility cert, uh, meeting with our, the utilities that are on South Rochford Road. Um, Century Lincoln, Black Hills Electric co-op are on those roads. Uh, we did give them an official notice to proceed to get those utilities moved out of the roadway. Um, our, our, uh, train left the station. Um, uh, we, the, the plans have gone, uh, up to the bid letting office for review so we can get, prepare for bid letting on the South Rochford Road reconstruction project. Um, with that, the Forest Service portfolio has been sent to Federal Highway. Uh, we're waiting on a, uh, certification of the Fonzie, which, uh, will come from the Environmental Office in, in the state. Um, so we're pretty much identical place that we were with Sheridan Lake Road exactly one year ago. Uh, we're hoping for a March, uh, early March, uh, early April, March, April bid letting for the, uh, road project for construction commencing in 2021. So, um, we're pushing forward, we're, we're working real hard to, to make that happen, so.
Oh, the first motion needs to be on the utility certificate on the project?
Correct.
Yeah, approve. Mr. Drews?
I'd make a motion that, uh, we approve the utility certificate for the reconstruction of South Rochford Road.
There a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeSanto? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item B, sir.
Item B, uh, in front of you here is the, this is actually for the bridge project that has been let. Um, just keeping my notes here, it came in at, so here, oh, I don't have that up. Um, the bridge project was led on November eighteenth, came in at nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents, um, which was approximately, their engineering estimate was a, it was a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars higher than the engineering estimate. So it's almost a million bucks. Um, I did actually talk to Jack Corr yesterday. Um, they're looking at possibly a value engineering, uh, proposal to, to hopefully get that cost down a little bit. Um, we'll see what he comes up with.
Nice.
With that, um, this is, uh, for the, the construction administration and engineering on the project, which the state has elected to give to FMG Engineering here in Rapid City. They're located on Deadwood Avenue. Uh, we're responsible for twenty percent of this contract. And, and what FMG will do is much like Ferber's doing on Sheridan Lake Road, just help the state with inspection and make sure everything's going right. Um, states got limited main power, so.
Thank you, Ron. Do we have a motion?
I wanted to.
Okay, let's have a motion, then we'll have discussion, Ron, is that cool?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ron. Motion by Ross Connect, second by LeCroy. Ross Connect, a follow-up, please.
Uh, Joe, the successful bidder, Core Construction, is that the same, uh, company that did the bridge over by New Underwood for us with the, and the one that did the Bradsky Road?
Uh, they did the Bradsky Road Bridge, they also did the one sixty-fourth bridge. Um, they came to us with the modular design and saved us quite a bit of money on that. Um, and they actually, recently this year, they've done work on the Reservoir Road Bridge for us. Um, they did a rehabilitation project on that road, so.
And my last question would be, what's the, when they say limiting amount to ninety, which is FMG, what's, is that in addition to the total cost that we talked about earlier?
Right, so the nine eighty-five is for the construction cost. Um, the ninety thousand is basically the state is paying the eighty percent of that. So for the construction admin part of it. Ferber's doing this exact thing on Sheridan Lake Road for us.
Okay, so it'd be your soft cost or whatever associated with the bridge?
Yep, it would go under like our consulting, um, consulting light item.
Okay, we do have a motion by Ross Connect, second by LeCroy. LeCroy, you seconded, I remember, sorry. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item C is Mystic, Mystic Road, uh, speed limit resolution. Um, you guys voted on to have us bring this back at the last commission meeting. Um, it was actually found, I guess, unbeknownst to myself, I guess. Uh, our traffic manager took a look at it, uh, trying to put the resolution together. And, um, the northern portion of it is already set at thirty-five miles an hour. Um, so we're just reducing that fifty mile an hour to forty miles an hour, so.
Thank you, do we have a motion?
Move, move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by Drews, discussion? Go ahead.
So, I didn't realize that was already signed for.
I didn't either.
Yeah, that was an official action apparently taken at some point in time.
Uh, I didn't, I did not get that information of when that was done, but it is, it does make sense for that northern portion, it's very curvy and, and, you know, it makes sense for that northern portion for sure.
Yeah.
Nice. Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item D, we have three motions.
Uh, well, there's three different options.
Oh, three different options, you're right.
One to vote on both of them and then two separate. Um, so FTE request, uh, we talked about this quite a bit over the summer, um, just due to our need for maintenance workers in, in Rapid City. Um, you know, the last time we advertised, a year ago, I think we've got, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we got like seven applicants the last time we looked for maintenance workers. And, and this go-around, we got thirty. Um, there's a lot of people out there, I think, looking for stable work. We did have, we had four solid applicants, um, four solid candidates that we, we interviewed ten and, and four of those were very solid. Um, over the, the course of the, since two thousand and sixteen, we've actually lost three maintenance workers from our Rapid City Division. One of those, we transferred to New Underwood as a maintenance worker there. Um, one of those. One of the, another one of those, we lost to our mechanics, he transferred from maintenance worker to, to a mechanic. And then we put on a, a Rapid City foreman in the Rapid City Division, took a lot of the load off of Mark. Mark was doing two jobs before, prior to that, for what, about ten years, Mark? Nine? Probably the reason his hair's so gray.
Just ten, that's it? Just kidding.
Just ten, but it, it's very much needed, all of those things. But it's very been noticeable over the course of the summer and as we go into the winter months, we've only got one alternate, so if somebody calls in, a route, you know, not going to get done in a timely fashion, it'll get done, but it just won't get done in the same time fashion. So that's the, the first FTE request. The, the second FTE request was actually something our, our shop foreman came to me with, an idea for a parts runner and maybe just a yard person, be able to put salt away when we receive salt, be able to put our AE one fifty away in our oil tanks that we often have to hold back a maintenance worker for to, to do those things. This person would be, you know, very useful, both in our shop, be able to help out up front and in the yard, be, be an all-around person. We sent some tasks over to HR and he was very prompt with his team, getting us a job description put together and then a DBM rating put to it. So if approved, he's got the, the, the job description and the DBM rating to be approved next.
Commissioner Drews?
So Joe, when it says here, I mean, on the suggested motions, it talks about adding one FTE, but actually as I'm understanding you, these are really replacement, these are, these are positions that were already created?
No, so we've got, we had one, we had a maintenance worker leave us in November and then we, that's why we advertised for maintenance workers this time, that we're hiring one, we'd like to hire two out of that pool that we hired.
The one would be in addition.
One would be in addition and then the shop assistant or shop staff assistant would be the second FTE request.
And these are in your budget? Sorry, Commissioner, these are in your budget?
They weren't originally in our budget, but we did take a good hard look at our budget and we can accommodate these.
Okay, Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Joe, I'm in, in support of this because I, I read through what, we're replacing what was already there and I think you're already doing an effective job with your mechanics and your foremans, I agree. The assistant, I think, is something I knew that was gonna, what was gonna come up because, I mean, with a facility like that, I like the job description that you guys filled out. I mean, the person's gonna be, end up doing snow removal, he's gonna have the, or whoever's has the experience to wear, if something's short on the flag stuff, that person can go here for a day. I mean, there's a lot of options in there. The only thing I would, I would recommend, I was thinking about making a substitute on them, but I'm not, I think I'd just make a recommendation, I'd like to see that person focus on maybe acquiring the CDL.
So we actually already have a person, he's a flag person for us right now, he's, we've talked with him and he is interested in the position. He actually recently interviewed for the maintenance worker position. He doesn't have a CDL currently, but he's interested in getting one, he's actually got an appointment to do so, but they're a month out, month and a half out to, to even get your written test done. So that is, you know, something that we've talked to him about and he is interested in doing.
With that, with that position, I think we helped them get that, we're gonna get more buy-in with, in, in the atmosphere and they could step up.
Absolutely.
You know, I, I think it's very important, if anybody's seen how these shops are ran, I mean, there's, even the upstairs part where the parts are held, I mean, you need to have people running, go get those parts and, and I know you guys have been pulling people off to do a lot of that stuff, that's why I think that, that assistant's a, a good position and it's also a good way to get further into the organization. That's why I support the CDL.
And, and I think it'll be, it'll allow our mechanics and our shop foreman to utilize their time doing what they do best, where somebody, you know, that's not a mechanic can do, they're running for them and we'll get more, we'll get bang for our buck and I think ultimately it'll end up saving us money.
Yeah.
Nice.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Joe, I'm adding up the hours at fourteen forty-six an hour for the new shop staff assistant and it's coming up to thirty thousand seventy-six eighty for the year. The fifty-four thousand, I'm assuming is adding on benefits and, okay.
Yes, those are, the, the costs you see in front of you are with retirement and we just assumed a family plan to make sure our bases are covered.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion on either one, two, or three for the motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to ma, to add one FTE, a highway maintenance worker effective December fourteenth twenty twenty and one FTE shop, shop staff assistant effective December twenty-seven twenty twenty.
Motion by LaCroy. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Item eighteen is Director John Moore, Human Resources.
Good morning Commissioners, John Moore, Pennington County HR. So thank you for that last motion to approve those FTEs for Highway. I'm gonna get off-topic for just a second. I also want you to know what his department, Joe's department and his team have been doing with regard to partnering with Western Dakota Tech. So they've visited recently with the instructors in the diesel mechanics area, as well as visited with the students and spoke to them about the potential of becoming a county employee and working in the shop and/or working in other capacities within the county. I was fortunate enough to, to participate in the meeting with them and want you to know that we're also working to develop an internship and/or apprenticeship within the Highway Department so we can actually get students from that program to come work for the county directly. It would help us in really piggyback on top of this, this shop assistant, but get people to get a taste of what it's like to work in a high-volume shop and one of the best-run shops around and give us a chance to test drive, if you will, some of those people that are interested in doing so. Long-term, this will help us prevent any lapses in, in coverage as far as personnel in those positions and it also helps us develop a better partnership with the, the college there and looking at county employment as a viable option. The law enforcement arm already does, they're out there on a very regular basis, working with them to actually get people into programs, correctional officers, the deputies, et cetera. This just will help us build upon that. So I wanted to share that before we actually got into the item that I had on the agenda so I didn't forget. So the, the item before you today is actually to create the position that you just approved us to add to the Highway Department. It's a brand-new job, a brand-new job description. So as we went through this, and again, kudos to Joe and his team for getting what they wanted this person to do, all we do in HR is put it together in a format that actually works. So in that process, we developed the job description that you have before you, we were able to actually assign that DBM rating as well with a starting rate of fourteen forty-six an hour. So what we're seeking today is the, the possible motion to approve the position title and corresponding DBM pay grade as presented and to authorize HR to actually update the position listing, which is on file in our HR office.
Thank you, John. Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Can we take five?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Are you okay with the five-minute break?
Motion to take a five-minute.
Second by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we come out of our break, do we have to make a motion? No? Okay. So next we'll have items from the chair and commissioner members, this is anything that isn't on your committees. From the chair, Ms. Holly's gonna describe, kind of, we're not doing a Christmas party this year like we're in a big potluck. Holly's gonna describe kind of what we're gonna be doing for our employees. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Sure. Yes, we are foregoing our annual employee potluck due to the virus, so we're doing things a little bit differently this year in regards to kind of a virtual, no-contact type, but still make it fun and festive for our employees. This week is find frosty, so we have a little, little itty-bitty frosty this year instead of the eight-foot one that we typically use. But we have taken pictures of him in different places around the county and gets emailed to the employees every morning and they are to figure out where he's at. And at the end of the week, if they get all five of them right, they get entered into a drawing for gift card and those little Wendy's tags, so you get your free frosty. So that's this week. Next week, I believe, is the decorating of the tree or the door. We'll have a contest for that in the individual offices. The following week is like movie trivia, Christmas Carol trivia, just kind of different fun games that'll also be entered in for prizes. And then finally, on the twenty-second, will be the ugly Christmas sweater and attire contest. So definitely stop by and see everybody on that Tuesday, it is, I believe. And I also would like to take this moment to give Highway a huge shout-out. When Rapid City canceled their parade of lights this weekend, Highway stepped up and was amazing and got the parade float down to Hill City and participated in that Friday night and it was, it was amazing, it was a good time, so thankful that they were willing to do that for us after we put in all those hours of decorating and it looked great.
When does our December newsletter go out?
Next week, I want to say.
I was just having a brain fart that maybe the commissioners, all of us could, you know, put something in there about what's our favorite part of Christmas or something to do with Christmas for the newsletter. I don't know if that's something this board would like to do, but I think it'd be kind of something different, send, send a whole message that, you know, thank you employees from, or from the commission, that maybe we could put something in there from each of us that says, what's your favorite part of Christmas or something? Anybody opposed to that?
I could certainly work with Megan and have her shoot you guys an email and get, if you could get that back right away, yeah, we can certainly do that.
Are you okay with that, board? I think it'd be something fun for them to read on this commission, what is our favorite part? Eating, probably for me, just kidding. No, decent, thank you. Was I gonna ask you something else, Holly, but I can't remember? How about commission members? Do we have anything that you've attended or went to that's different than your committee meetings?
Um, Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
The, the typical stuff of the youth city council, I sat through that meeting and plus we did interviews for the new ones coming in.
How long's that term, Commissioner?
They're staggered.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't have that in front of me, but we go from tenth grade to ninth graders and we have some seniors, of course, seniors, you can't do two-year terms with seniors when it's the final, final year, but yeah, it varies. So it, it's staggered, so we always got, every year we're gonna have new, new ones coming in and they do an outreach and we had, I believe, fifteen applicants for eight openings. So some very good applicants, some very talented, we reappointed two that had already been on there and reading through their resumes, I mean, I, I keep reflecting to when me and Mark were doing the interviewings for the four H and I can just see Mark's face when he says, I've got faith in our young people after this meeting, you know? You do, these young people are really, really caring and, and I'm, I'm really shocked of how progress this youth city council's doing because Sean, who helped organize it, said he's helped a couple other communities, he says, where this youth council is right now is usually takes three to four years to get to that point as far as some of the stuff that they're taking care of and some of the recommendations that they're sending out to the city council, they're, they're bold and they're blunt. This is what we think, you know, even if they fail, so it, it's really great to be involved in that, they're doing a good job, I think, so I just want to pass that on as far as the process. Come to think of it, what else?
How about the human relations commission, they're having, hiring somebody and that kind of thing?
From my understanding with the human relate, I can give a little history on that if you want.
Okay.
Back in the day, in seventies, you know, there were, they used to have what they call Indian white relations committee that our, my grand uncle helped start and out of that came a human relations commission to deal with some disparities in the community with housing and whatnot. That carried on for up until about nineteen eighty-seven with, when the new mayor came in in eighty-seven, I'm not saying he did away with it, but just like what happened to when we, when you were on the council, when we re-initiated it, they closed it down and there wasn't enough participant, enough complaints that they closed it down and so I don't know how many years, Deb, it went dormant. Jay Davis brought to the city council about reviving it and I chaired the committee that went through the ordinances and the conditions of, of the new one and then it was appointed and we dealt with the complaints for the first year. And then somewhere along the line, some of the complaints were deferred to the, to the attorney's office to go through them and so then all of a sudden the complaint, what was actually getting to the commission kind of went down. I think it was getting close to being, the mayor was about ready to do away with it just because strict numbers, but then MOU come along and decided that they wanted to partner into the, the human relations and, and do more community work with it and so forth. I can't give you all the details, but it sounds like it's gonna get relived, revamped. The good thing about it is any committee that you start, they're gonna hire someone full-time, that's what they're gonna run it and it's gonna take care of it that way. You gotta have that in order for, to keep things alive and things moving, you gotta have that full-time person, so that's as far as I know right now.
Okay, and they, did they hire Malcolm yesterday, do you know?
That's going on their agenda for tomorrow, their working session tomorrow. It, it's gonna be on their working session and then probably next Monday is the normal city council meeting, so I'm, I'm assuming they'll get through their working session and, and, because they changed up, they don't have public works or legal finance anymore, they do what they call working session, so.
So do you do, do they do human relations all the way through Western South Dakota or they just do Rapid City? I mean, where do they base?
It's just gonna be the ones in Rapid City, anything that's actually violations gets forwarded on to the state with the help of the, of the commission. That's the way it was set up now, but it's, it's how things, we'll, we'll have more understanding once things get finalized and Malcolm gets in and, and sets up how things are gonna run.
Rules and regulations, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Madam Chair.
Mark DeSanto, you're up.
I attended the fire service board meeting in your stead and not a lot to report, however, I would like to kind of point out how efficient that they run their, the fire service board. We've got radios that, we're, we're switching to a new communications standard and that switch-over encompasses either getting rid of or basically re-assigning radios to all the different departments. It's, it's quite a logistical challenge, I, I would say. But what's neat is, is that there's a lot of those radios that can still be used for two-way communication. Each one of our radios has a signed ID number that costs money, you have to buy it, I believe, from the FCC, the state purchases that and then we have to pay the state for that radio license. But what we can do is we can take those licenses and we can transfer them to the new radios so that we don't have to pay that.
Nice.
That, those fees all over, and there's a lot of radios, it's a lot of money. So they're doing that to save money, they're not gonna completely retire the old radios because there's still dead spots that we have in Pennington County that won't be able to be reached by the new communicate, the new communication system. So what they'll be doing is taking those radios, they'll remove the ID number from them and use them as two-way communications because each one of those radios is quite expensive as well. And so rather than surplus them, hold them for departments like Wall, for example, that has a large dead spot down by Pedro, so that they can communicate two-way hand-to-hand with one another and then relay that information to, to the main base. But I just, it was very interesting listening to how they're going to go about transferring all of these radios to, and, and utilizing every piece. every piece of equipment that they have, rather than just dispose of them, get rid of them and, and not use them again. The, there's some radios that we purchased in two thousand and seventeen, I believe. Um, quite, quite a number. I don't know the number of radios, but those particular radios are able to transfer completely to the new, to the new, uh, communication system. So we won't have to buy a whole bunch of new radios. Um, we'll be able to continue to use those probably for quite some time. Uh, so that was the, one of the interesting things that came up at the fire service board meeting was, was this whole uh, logistics of transferring these radios and saving that particular ID number that was given to us from the state to operate, to the license, I guess, to operate those radios, so. Um, it was a interesting meeting. Thank you.
Ron Roskinet?
Well, I got three meetings, then two via Zoom and one in person. The in-person one was, uh, Pennington County Council of Aging. We actually met here in our co- uh, commissioner's conference room. And, uh, probably the biggest order of business that day was we decided to get rid of a savings account, which was miniscule and, uh, put that into a checking account. And we, as with other organizations, we canceled the, our annual Christmas party. But everybody's in good health and good spirits and we're looking forward to, uh, getting back on the road in two thousand and twenty-one. The building committee, uh, Gary and I do that via Zoom. And we're, we're just talking about projects. We, we got the lamp lighter butt. We got the lacrosse streets sold. Right now, we're, uh, waiting for a study to, uh, review the infrastructure at the jail, which is gonna be very, I mean, the study's a hundred thousand roughly. Uh, you can imagine what, uh, repairing some of those, uh, that, that infrastructure is gonna be, uh. But it is what it is. We got to, uh, we gotta keep looking at it because it's gonna hit us sooner or later and we need to, we need to know when it does happen. We, we gotta have a game plan. Uh, evidence building down here, uh, the floor is heaving. I suppose a couple of years ago, we got a lot of rain and that mixed with, uh, they, uh, Mike calls it a fatty soil. That soil is pushing up and that floor and that evidence building is heaving. And the cure, I guess, would be to, uh, drill some holes and, uh, put some pumps in, try to get that water out of there, but it's, uh, that's probably our biggest challenge right now relative to uh, trying to get something done sooner than later because when that floor heats up, doors aren't shut and walls crack and it could, uh, I'm sure there's a lot of material in that building that we don't want to, uh, jeopardize. Uh, then I did the TIF, Rapid City TIF. It's, uh, TIF number two zero, T I F zero zero six. We approved that, uh, via Zoom. Lloyd was on that panel. It's about a thirty million dollar TIF. And it's a collaboration between Dream Design and the city. Without that collaboration, this TIF wouldn't, uh, have been, uh, the, well, the en- infrastructure that's gonna extend uh, from east, uh, it's gonna go down east to Anamosa Street. It's gonna take an area that's roughly one hundred and sixty acres behind Menards and it's gonna create nine hundred apartment units, a hundred and sixteen mobile homes, fifty, uh, smaller, what they call, uh, tiny homes and and so that, that area is gonna be developed, but to do that, they needed to extend utility services down east to Anamosa from Elkvale to North Valley Drive. So, but, uh, some of these TIFs, uh, they're not, uh, looked at the favorably, but, uh, this one here, uh, there's no doubt about it. Everybody's on board to approve it.
Ron, just a question and maybe Gary needs to answer. How many TIFs can one person get? Or does it become a financial issue or financial burden? Meaning if that company or that entity, because a lot of times they enter and under different LLCs, becomes a liability instead of not. I mean, how many, we, we don't have a limitation of how many one person can do.
No. And I don't think there's any way of putting a limitation on it either.
What happens if that entity goes bankrupt? What happens to the TIF? If that ever happened? Did anybody ever look into that before?
It's private financing, so I'm assuming the private sector would be involved quite heavily, but not, uh, I don't think any government entity would be jeopardized.
Yeah, because I've seen a couple of the bigger companies that own, they're not through TIFs, but through different organizations and how much havoc that has caused in between trying to basically sell those properties. And it's usually because of the infrastructure issues, so. Um, it'd be kind of conducive to maybe look into something like that if, um, because we are approving them as cities and counties and not that I'm against TIFs, but I just had a brain fart on that and was wondering financially, what would that do, if anything, to the institutions? Because if you look at thirty million and twenty million and, you know, some of these TIFs, they're, they're pretty high dollar TIFs.
I, I think Ron nailed it. It, one of the things with the TIF is the, the applicant's the one who secures the financing and and so it's the applicant and the banks who are taking the risk. It's not uh, the government entity taking the risk. We're doing the collection and distribution, but, but I know where you're getting at, Deb. In-house loans, you get ten is too many. Would, at what, what point does? I guess it's the investors who set that limit.
Well, but we are.
The investment agencies are gonna set that limit.
And we're making that increment low until later is what I'm saying, so. Uh, does it affect us to the point where, okay, we just gave them all these different basically tax breaks?
I think you just look at the history.
Yeah.
As they come up.
Okay. Just a question.
I think when we decided to approve that, it's hard to do that when you can't see. I'm on a phone. I don't have a computer with a screen and you don't know who's, who's in the audience, who's not, but, uh, I think we all agreed that the applicant was, had, uh, a lot of, a strong history and was very credible. I think if it would have been a, uh, an applicant that wouldn't have had that credibility, that might not have passed. It's one of those who just got away its merits.
One of, one of the things, Ron, was that most of that TIF was for a pump station, a high-pressure, low-pressure water line going through all the way up to Elkvale Road. That's what's gonna help open up this stuff. So it wasn't, it's not like, uh, we're, it was for a bunch of.
Financing housing.
Yeah, I mean.
So you're, that's right, Lloyd, because of.
And it's also gonna go to Western, go to Vodak and, and a lot of dirt movement and all that stuff, but that's what the bulk of the.
Yeah, it was just about a hundred percent infrastructure, uh, gradient and roads, so.
That makes sense. So even if you failed financially, not doing the development, you could still, which is true on a lot of the TIFs we did in the city, is you'd use that infrastructure so other developers could come in either way, so it'd still benefit the city. So that makes, just to answer my question. Thank you. That was good. Anything else, Ron?
No, that's it.
Okay, so the fire service board, of course, wasn't feeling well. And the Pennington County Housing, we had a special meeting. Um, not last week, the week before. And then, um, we thought, I thought we had picked a director, but then they had another meeting, uh, last Wednesday. Um, I'll give more of the details, um, on some of that later, but, um, last night we had another special meeting on the issue of the director, um, the new director, because Doug Wells is leaving as of December thirty-first, so. Um, there's just a few things that, um, in executive session, we need to discuss on some of that, so. Other than that, I think we're good. I'm good. Gary?
Nothing for me.
Lloyd?
Uh, I'll just piggyback on, on Ron's, on the TIF committee. That was a, to me, that was a very difficult meeting because I didn't get signed on to do virtual. So I had to do it by phone and chair the meeting by phone. So it was very difficult, but I think we, we got through it and, and we, we all agreed it, but it was a, this is a pretty amazing development for our community, this one that's coming up. I mean, there's land set aside for schools. I've had people go as it can be a high school or not, but it, it's got tiny homes. It's got mobile homes. It's got apartments. It's got, and that's when you go back behind Mall, uh, Menards, take a drive back up to some time, you're, you're gonna see a mixed use of stuff. So I, it, it's a really good, I think, development that we're gonna see and one that's moving forward. Um, the LEPC meeting we had, it was by, uh, phone also and that, and that one, nothing new to really report. It was standard procedure stuff. Um, Black Hills National Forest Community meeting was, uh, was an un, uh, unofficial meeting because it wasn't advertised, but it was mostly presentations from the state and, and uh, state legislators represented, gave their reports and there was a couple other, uh, details.
Did they have any off-road discussion or anything like that at that meeting?
Uh, no, not that I recall.
Hey, TV's nothing.
It, it's a three and a half hour meeting, so I might have stepped off for a little bit. But no, it was, uh, just that, it was unofficial because it wasn't advertised, so, uh, it was mostly reports from the surrounding areas. And actually, they discussed how, uh, well, Scott's here. Uh, there's board, we recognize some of the board members that are stepping off, that they're termed out. Um, and this, every year this happens when they term out, we, they sent in requests for new board members to the, the federal part and we still haven't heard. At typical six months to, I'm an alternate and it took me that long to get, find out if I was an alternate, so it, the process is very slow. And that, and with the changing of the president, it could probably take even longer this time. I don't know. So. Um, hel- community health, uh, that was pretty typical stuff. Uh, nothing special really to report. The finances, they're a little lower than what they expected. Uh, with COVID, they're not getting as much businesses as what they needed. They, they talked about their dental program. I think they've hired on a new, uh, dentist and so forth, so. But, uh, yeah, there's struggling and they're also I'll have to report back on the next one. They're changing, uh, some of their building up, doing some construction on the north side of the building, putting new entrances and so forth.
You else, Lloyd?
That's it.
Thank you. Item twenty-one is approval of the vouchers. We have three motions. Move to approve the voucher in the amount of two thousand three twenty-five to Lloyd C. LaCroy. You have a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinet?
Second.
Second by DeSanto?
No.
In favor, say aye, with one extension from Lloyd LaCroy. All opposed. Motion carries. Item number two is move to approve the vouchers, amount of twenty-eight million, three eighty-seven, one seventy-eight, eighty-seven cents. Second by Drews, second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Move to approve the vouchers to the I L A R C in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three dollars and sixty cents. Motion by
Move approval.
Second.
Right? Second by Roskinet. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Item twenty-two is item.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Could I, I'd just like to explain why I abstained from, from that one. Uh, as it, this was, is for vouchers for, as anybody knows, I have renters, uh, rental properties and I've had a couple tenants who've had some struggles with the COVID nineteen and they applied for, for assistance through Health and Human Services and that's what that's.
CARES Act, yes, sir. Thank you. Items from the public? Anybody like to speak on any item from the public at this time? Nope? Okay. Item twenty-three is items from planning and zoning. Uh, we'll have the board of adjustment. Do we have a motion to open the board of adjustment?
Move to, uh, proceed into board of adjustment.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Ms. Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Item A is subdivision regulations variance S V twenty dash zero four to waive submittal of percolation test and soil profile information and to waive submittal of a fire mitigation plan and a general agriculture district. Um, this subdivision regulation variance is in response to a preliminary plan that will be heard later in this meeting. Um, the applicant, David Grover, is in the process of subdividing three existing lots into twelve lots. The applicant has submitted this variance to waive the submittal of a fire mitigation plan and percolation test and soil profile, all information. I do have the criteria for the variance up on the screen. I'm just gonna read the responses. Um, item A, creating twelve additional lots on the Mold Hill City Road will increase density. This request could be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare or injures to other adjoining properties if fire mitigation procedures are not implemented to minimize the impact in an area surrounded by heavily wooded areas. Item B, there appears to be no particular physical surrounding shape or to- topographic condition that would cause undue hardship to the owner. Strict application of this ordinance would require the applicant to submit a fire mitigation plan and submit percolation test and soil profile information. Item C, installation and maintenance of individual onsite wastewater treatment systems are the responsibility of the property owner and should not cause any increase in public costs. Fire mitigation, fire protection costs can be incurred by the public in the event of a wildfire or structural lack of a fire mitigation plan could cause an increased cost to the public in the event of a fire. Item D is granting this variance will not place the subdivision in non-conformance with the Pennington County zoning ordinance or the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan. As I said before, this, um, is in response to a layout plan that was approved by the Board of Commissioners at the November, or, excuse me. Um, it was approved by the Planning Commission on November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Um, this was routed around to the internal review process. Um, no major items of concern, um, came forth, um, but staff is recommending, uh, denial of this variance.
Um, is, was there anybody in the audience that was gonna speak today? I know is Mr. Grover here? That's Mr. Grover. Anybody else?
And there's two individuals on Zoom that wish to speak on this item.
Okay, so we do have SRIKU requests. Do we have their names on our request form or something?
Received any forms specifically, no.
You guys, did you or, um, Joan take their names?
Um, one of them is Ms. Lang, her name.
Ms. Lane, okay.
And her sister. They are partners in, um, the Ford Mountain Ranch Partnership.
Okay, so Jackie and Cutie Lane. Thank you. All right. So Mr. Grover, would you like to speak first?
Yeah, my, my name is, uh, David Grover and, uh, uh, a couple of different things on, on the, uh, the items that, uh, Brittany just read, uh, that, uh, with the fire mitig- on item number two there, A two, um, that it would, uh, uh, fire mitigation procedures are not implemented to minimize impact in an area surrounded by heavily wooded areas. And, and of the twelve lots that I have there, I, there are two of them that are very heavily, um, wooded. And, and, um, I had, uh, I hadn't, I kinda got behind and, uh, and did not, uh, answer, uh, Brittany's email when she gave me a whole list of what what are the kind of rules and regulations for fire mitigation. So on Friday, this is the email that I sent her. And, and I asked for a variance for the fire mitigation because I was only, uh, I, I said five minutes away from the Hill City Fire Department, which in all reality, I'm only three minutes away. But, um, anyway, uh, but I do plan on in those, that's basically those two areas where of A and B, uh, lots are, that I do plan this winter to, uh, remove any dead, deceased or, uh, and also be thinning of the trees in those areas. And, uh, and also I'm in the process of working with an attorney to do, uh, 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 covenances on, on the, on these, these properties and covenants, conditions and, and restrictions. And, and one of them, of course, will be the owners are off. And one of them, of course, will be the owners are obligated, if any lot shall be responsible for the removal of dead or deceased trees, knots, weeds, shrubbery, and anything else that might present a possible fire hazard on their lots. And another one of the conditions, covenants, will be that roofs shall be fire retardant singles, concrete reptiles, compensation singles, or colored metal, colored coated metals. So I do plan on doing that and I actually, I do plan on submitting a fire because although I asked for variance, it was also when I was asking for variance for the perk tests. And my reasoning for the perk test is, you know, on a five acre parcel and just bear with me a minute here, but Lot F has, it's 5.561 acres. And pretty much most of those lots up there run from about 5.3 up to nine, I have one that's a nine acre, but most of them in that five. And if that constitutes up to 242,237 square feet, if you put a house of 1,500 square foot, a garage of 1,500 square foot, and a barn of 2,000 square foot, that's 5,000 square feet. Just track that off, that still leaves a 237,237 square foot of undisturbed land on this property. If, in fact, only half of that was possible land that would work for a septic tank and drain field, that would have, in a typical scenario, a three-bedroom house is about 600, is 600 square feet of drain field you have to have for a three-bedroom house, which is the minimum for Pennington County. And like I say, only if half of that property was feasible for a septic tank and drain field, there's, that calculates out to 197 possible sites for a drain field. So if I do a perk test, there's no way I'm going to know on that five acre parcel that people will most likely build their house in some other place. And plus, they can't get a building permit until the perk test is done. I'm just asking, not that I'm saying not do a perk test, I'm saying just not do it now, but prior, but I'll actually follow the rules and regulations of, you know, of the Pennington County.
So Brittany, aren't we, I thought we were doing away with perk tests. We just haven't done that yet?
No, we still do percolation and profile hole information, but it's typically done at the building permit process. We are, we are working on the subdivision regulations and updating them and removing that requirement out of the subdivision regulations. Just because in most instances, this board has waived that requirement and they still have to do it. Regardless of whether they do it at the planning process or the building permit process.
Even if we waive it, he still has to do it at the building process, building permit end. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was, that's why I did that. There was a, maybe I need to let Judy and Jackie speak now and then I'll respond to their comments.
Thank you. So the perk test is going to be later and then the fire mitigation, you got a lot of acreage that you believe doesn't need to be fire mitigated. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. Out of the 12 lots, there are two lots that definitely need it. And those two lots, I will be working on this winter. You know, I cleaned up the other side. I had the 12 acres on the other side. You know, I spent last winter cleaning that up and it really looks nice. I thinned a lot of trees, took down every dead tree and brush piles and burned them all because you got to have three inches of snow to do your burn piles. And so I did that and I plan on doing that this winter to that A and B.
Thank you. Sometimes when it's not required, sir, and it's not put on paper, people don't follow through.
Yeah.
So for me personally, I won't agree with no fire mitigation plan, but I'm only one of five. Commissioner DeSanto?
I'm in agreement with you, Deb. And not only that, but you know, you mentioned that you're only three minutes from the Hill City Fire Department. But I lived in an area very similar to yours out in Washington State and there were multiple times that we were on a call somewhere else and had, and then another fire started somewhere else, like in a situation where you have lightning and that kind of stuff. And even just, what was it, six years ago that the big fire was up in Hill City? There were multiple fires burning in multiple places. So don't count on that you're only three minutes from the Hill City Fire Department.
And when I first was filing that variance, and it might, basically it was for this perk test and that to begin with, and then I added that. But I do plan on putting in a fire mitigation plan. I just have not followed through on that and I definitely will. Like I say, I emailed this only to Brittany and she's only had it since probably Monday. And so it might have been Saturday that I, but I, and I'm assuming that maybe even there has to be more than this and I'll be getting with Brittany and seeing what else I have to do to fire, to do the fire mitigation plan. But I definitely plan on doing that.
Okay. Thank you. So Jason or Brittany, when you do basically a Board of Adjustment, can we approve the percolation and not approve the mitigation or they both go together on a Board of Adjustment?
I think you could, separate the motions.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinet.
Brittany, can you explain what a fire mitigation plan is? I mean, I understand, I'm just relative to this, what would that involve?
In other areas, they typically have different, and it just depends. They will work with the volunteer fire department in that area, the fire department's in that area, the responders. They speak with Jerome and they look at different things. Some areas have required sprinkler systems in the homes as a fire mitigation measure. Some have required, you know, as you know, with the PUD in Rockerville, some extra storage capacity of water in the area. So there's just different things. It is just depending on the areas, depending upon response. It's depending, yeah, on a number of things.
So how do we do the one across the street? Those is 12 acres on the other side of the street where we approved three platted lots.
Correct.
So how, did that require a fire mitigation plan?
No, our subdivision regulations required it at seven lots. So when the subdivision is greater than seven lots.
So if this is roughly 65 acres and there's probably 10 acres that would be subject to any fire danger, would it be, could you just identify the two lots that would be heavily timbered and create a fire mitigation plan for those two lots that would be involved? Because the rest of that's just pretty much open prairie.
Right. And I did talk to Jerome yesterday about this plat request and there is still some concern about grassland fires. They have actually been on one almost every day in the last week or so. So that is still a concern as far as fire mitigation.
They've also been concerned about water supply. So being able to put it in flatland or not flatland for water supply is huge for a fire mitigation plan. And when I was on the Planning Commission, that was a huge issue was the drainage and the infrastructure, basically the water systems and how much they actually had. So it'd be nice, Mr. Grover, in my personal opinion, to know of what your water flows and, you know, water pressures are out there. I mean, you're putting a lot of lots out there. Because it's heavily wooded, doesn't always make it, you know, a fire's put out, whether it's a fire's on a flatland or a wooded area. There's got to be enough water to take care of that.
You mean like for the water out of a well? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah. And there is only one well on that whole acreage and that's on the other, on the 12 acres on the other side that I have. And that well is 75 feet deep and has 20 gallons a minute.
Yeah.
Which is a pretty, pretty nice well.
Mr. Grover, that's why you have the fire mitigation. And so number one, also, it helps when they're looking up this property as a volunteer fire department. Don't have the fire mitigation plan, they can use some of that information to actually help with the fire. So it's not just for you personally or the people that are going to build on it. It's for the fire department that is going to be coming out there to know basically where their water sources and stuff are.
Yeah, and I definitely will follow through on all of it, whatever I need to do to get an official fire mitigation plan in place.
Next, we'll have Jackie, Jackie Lane.
It's Judy Lang. I'm here by Zoom and I'm, I would just like to know that you can hear me.
We can hear you, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Haddock. My name is Judy Lang. I am the General Partner for Ford Mountain Ranch, LLLP. And we are neighboring property, our ranch, our historic ranch there adjoins the properties that Mr. Grover has purchased and seeks to develop. And so I'm very encouraged by the conversation I've just heard. We, we have read through, just that we got some information about his application to waive percolation and soil profile tests and also to waive the fire mitigation. Each of those items raised some questions and concerns for us. And Ms. Molitor has provided, I believe, to you a copy of a November 15 email that I sent with some details of our concerns. Do you have that document?
Is this the ones we just got today?
It would be the separate ones, yes.
Yes, the 23, 20, yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your taking time to look at that. I'll just highlight some of the details on it. We feel that regulations that are on the books are there for a really good reason and they've grown out of experience in the county. And we just urge that the regulations be applied in a way that protects all of us, Mr. Grover's interests and ours, and also those of the future residents who might buy a property there and build. So we urge the board to ask that he follow through completely on fire mitigation plans and that he do the soil information and percolation tests in a way that makes good sense. And if it gets deferred to builders at the permit level, that makes sense. Our reasoning for that is that our ranch is all downhill, downslope from the property he will develop. And as we all know, water goes downhill. So we've got one, one only access lane to get into our property. And it can be prone to flooding if the water running off his property comes down our lane and it makes it very impossible to, for us or for our tenant to get into the property to do the work. So we need to be assured that stormwater and percolated water from septic systems is going to be appropriately addressed. Fire mitigation, I think we've, I've been listening to your conversation. It sounds like you've got a good handle on that. We are surrounded in that area by lots and lots of forest. It's beautiful, but it's prone to fire and we need a good plan. You add more people, you add vehicles, we all know that increase of fire danger just because human beings cause fires.
So Ms. Judy, could I ask you a question? Did you guys do percolation tests and do you guys have a fire mitigation plan?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. Our ranch has been there for over 100 years, so my guess is those sorts of things were not required back in 1900. And so I don't know the answer to that. Thank you for asking.
How many acres do you have, Ms. Judy?
280.
Okay, so my recommendation is maybe get with the volunteer fire department anytime soon because that fire mitigation plan, you're right, is very essential, not only to this development, but yours as well.
Yes, and ours is not a development. It's mostly pastures and hay, but I'll take that under consideration. That sounds good. I was going to be out there this fall and COVID interrupted my plans and yours, so.
Well, with development around you as well, it's probably good to get a fire mitigation for your land. So just, just a suggestion, ma'am. Ms. Jackie?
Don't have anything else to add.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Jackie and Judy?
No.
Any commissioner? Nope? Okay, thank you. So.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ladies, very much. So would you like to take these separate commissioners or take them together? Hold on a sec. Hold on, sir. You can come up to the dais. Separate or together?
What's that?
On the request, because there's a percolation test.
I'd like to do them separate because Buzz had a good point. When you got five acres and you do a perk test, where are you going to do it at? You don't know where they're going to build it. I mean, where you do the perk test, they could build 200 feet away. So you're just, basically, you're throwing money away. And then if you're, if you're in Lot F and G and you take that common lot line and I do a perk test right there, I'm assuming that it's good on Lot F and I can assume it's good on Lot G. So there's so many moving parts here, but.
Okay, so the question-
When I listen to this, I'm in agreement with the fire mitigation, but until they really know where they're going to build it, I don't really see how you can do a perk test.
Okay, so it sounds like we want to take them separate, if that's okay. So let's start the discussion on the percolation test.
Madam Chair, I've got a question.
Commissioner Drews.
So can we, if we were to approve this, could we not put these in as conditions of that? Like the perk test would be, would be done before, you know, after a piece of property has been sold and before the building, so we know where it's at? Could that not be a condition? Could the soil not be a condition?
I think the perk test, once they have a building permit, they'll have to have a perk test. Meaning they'll still have to have a-
Be a condition?
No. I don't think it should be, Brittany, because when they get the building permit right, they're going to have to do a perk test because they're going to have to put that septic somewhere, is a good way to put it, Gare.
Correct. Brittany Molitor, again, at the building permit, they can't even submit the building permit for their structure until they have their septic permit. In order to get their septic permit, they have to do percolation and soil profile holes to even do the design for their septic system in the first place. So they'll have to do it even before their building permit gets approved or even submitted.
So every lot is basically, Mr. Grover would have to go to every lot right now and do a perk test and figure out which one, each one to do. But he shouldn't have to do that. It should be the person building on it.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I'm having a difficult time understanding why the staff recommended denial of it.
We just recommend denial of anything that's against our ordinance because we don't have the authority to recommend something that's against our ordinance.
But it was approved by the Planning Commission, correct?
The Planning Commission did not see this variance. Only the Board of Adjustment sees this variance.
Okay, so on the percolation test, let's take that separately. Do we have a motion on the percolation test?
I make a motion that we approve that, his request. Because I think we all know there's all kinds of safety mechanisms before those septic's go in, before anybody can build a home.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve on the percolation, to not have to do it.
Second.
Second, motion by Roskinet, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. And how about the fire mitigation?
I would move to approve with the condition that a fire mitigation plan be in place prior to any building upon the property.
Then motion by DeSanto. Is there a second? Second by Drews for discussion.
How do we document that so that we know that that's going to happen in the future?
Would that be more or less to deny the way, to waive the submittal of the fire mitigation plan in the general agriculture district?
Yes, and then we could put it as a condition in his plat that's coming up. Am I correct?
Correct. So he would have to have the fire mitigation plan in place in accordance with our subdivision regulations before the final plat could be recorded at the registered date.
So we deny it and then he has to put it in his subdivision.
I amend my motion to deny the-
So do we have?
And I'd second that, huh?
And do we have a different motion? He's taking, you got, you two are taking your request off the table now and now we'll put in a new motion.
You made the motion to, no, deny.
And you made a motion to deny. DeSanto to deny, Drews to deny any other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. So, Mr. Grover, what will happen is basically on the percolation, we gave you that exception on the fire mitigation. What I'm going to guess, and it hasn't happened yet, it'll probably be on one of your conditions for your subdivision, sir.
Can I say one more?
Yes, sir. You can, you can speak, sir.
I just want to, basically, David Grover again, I just want to talk with- I just wanna, basically, David Grover again, I just wanna, uh, talk with, basically, Judy and Jackie. And, and, uh, I just wanted to let you know as far as septic tank and drain fields, uh, Judy and Jackie, I've been doing them for forty-eight years now. I, um, I'm licensed in Pennington, Pennington Mead in Custer County. Uh, and, uh, I also have a sewer and water contractor's license. Uh, you know, it's, it's back forty-eight years ago, it was way different. Nowadays, this planning and zoning people, they come out and inspect a couple of different times for every septic tank and drain field that I put in. And, and, uh, I, uh, I have been keeping very busy doing that and, uh, pretty much most of everything I do is word of mouth because I, I pride myself in that I do it right. And there's not, you can't always do it a hundred percent according to the book at times. And, and, uh, so then even I've worked many a times with the state, uh, guy and, uh, and I just, I, I just always have tried to, to do the, the best job I can. And I, I promise you that I will, um, make sure that those septic tanks and drain fields are, are put in according to all the, uh, uh, rules and regulations of Pennington County.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. So next, go ahead.
So do we still need to do one on the soil profile hole information? Or those two go together?
Basically, all go together.
Yep.
So does the motion need to read that way, though?
Does the motion need to read that way, Brittany?
Right, so soil profile and percolation go together because both of them have to be done together to do the septic.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Drews.
I'll have to re-listen to it all, so I'm good.
Okay.
Commissioner Ros-
Brittany, uh, one, there's gotta be a certain distance between a well and a home and a septic.
Yes.
So that'd be hard to do a profile and a soil sample until you knew where the home is gonna go. Would that be a safe assumption?
Yes, that would be, and in some cases when lots are this large, um, that's why, um, this commission has waived these in the past, um, because you don't know where the building site is going to be just because you assume what, where someone would be, the purchaser may have another idea. Um, our ordinance does require that the profile hole and percolation test be done within fifteen feet of the, where the actual drain field is going to be.
I just want everybody to know that what we're doing, we're not in any way trying to jeopardize, uh, water quality or anything like that. We're just changing the sequence just a little bit.
Correct.
Thank you. You need a motion to come out of board of adjustment?
So move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is consent agenda, item B and C, Ms. Brittany?
Uh, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and one vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following two items. Item B is minor plat, NPL twenty dash thirty-seven, for Dean and Jennifer Karshnick, and approval is recommended. Item C is plan unit development review, PU sixteen oh three, for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, Century Home Crafters LLC, and Century Land Holdings LLC, and Summer Creek Inn LLC. And this is to be continued to the February second, two thousand twenty-one Board of Commissioner meeting per the applicant's request.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on item B and C from the consent agenda? Now, is there a commissioner that would like to pull item either B or C on the consent agenda?
No.
If not, uh, motion, please.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto on item B and C.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D is road naming, David Grover.
Uh, Cody, Sac, Planning Department. Item D is, uh, road naming of Mills Ranch Road. The applicant, David Grover, is requesting to name a road that will provide access to approximately eight lots. And naming the road will fulfill condition number five of, um, layout plan, LPL twenty dash twenty-four. Uh, emergency services did approve, uh, the road naming of Mills Ranch Road, so staff recommends approval of Mills Ranch Road, um, with the condition that the applicant is responsible for payment and posting of the road sign within sixty days of approval.
Okay, do we have a motion, Board?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item E, Shane Swedland's layout plat?
Okay, item E is layout plan, LPL twenty dash three-five. The applicant is, or it's to subdivide and create lot one and two of Swedland subdivision. The applicant is Shane Swedland. He is on Zoom if you guys have any questions. Uh, currently, the property sits as, it's zoned in agriculture district. It's five point oh-two acres. The lot is vacant of any structures. It takes access off of Marshall Gulch Road and there is special flood hazard area on the property. There's the hundred-year flood plain. The proposed lots, lot one, will be approximately two point five acres. It will require- It, it will require a rezone or a lot size variance. And lot two, um, will also be approximately two point five acres and it will be rezoned with a comp plan amendment or obtain a lot size variance. This was routed around the county highway department. The county highway department would like to see a single share of access on the Marshall Gulch Road, so an access easement should be platted on, on the two lots. Uh, staff did make this a condition. Um, the county addressing and certified flood plain manager requested that the hundred-year flood plain, hundred-year flood plain limits be put on the minor plat. Um, registered deeds and Department of Equalization did not have any comments. The applicant, Shane Swedland, is requesting to subdivide approximately five acres into two lots. Um, the, it's owned by two brothers, Shane and Chad. They want to put cabins on, on the property, but only one residence is allowed on a, on the property. So they're looking to subdivide so they can each put a cabin up, up, up on the road. Uh, the future land use of the property is full residential, which requires a three-acre minimum lot size. The applicant will need to obtain a rezone and a comprehensive plan amendment or a lot size variance for the proposed lots. Uh, the land use in the area, uh, is single-family residence, so what they're proposing to do does fit the area and for the purposes of the layout plan. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. Uh, how, uh, the planning commission did approve this. They did want one condition added, that only one point of access be utilized for both lots. So staff is recommending approval with fourteen conditions.
So Cody, um, is there a speaker request on this besides Shane?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay. Board, do you have questions or?
Madam Chair.
Or motion?
If they only have one approach off of Marshall Gulch, would their, uh, would lot two have to have an easement so you could get to the other lot if I'm looking at this right?
So it would just depend, I don't know where county highway would approve the approach, if they're to prove it farther up and then the access easement would have to access through lot two, or if they'd put it down farther on lot one and then the access easement would be for lot two. It would just depend on where highway approved that appro- that simple approach.
Shane, do you have, um, Ron Roskin asked for the approach and where would that approach be? Um, do you have any idea where you'd be putting that approach, Shane?
Uh, on the, uh, on the map that was shown, uh, that Cody had, had up, uh, over on the right side of that, where it's marked where the, where the line comes through, that is right at, uh, where the approach is right now. There is an approach, uh, onto the lot. And that basically, I mean, that's very close to halfway, you know, in between the two lots. So we think that that would be, you know, that'd make sense to keep that.
Okay, I see. Yeah, my, my exhibit here is different than that. That's why I asked that question, but that makes sense to put it at the, right there at the lot line.
There you go. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Roskin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Shane, your layout plat was approved, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is preliminary plat for David Grover.
Good morning, Commissioners, again. Item F is preliminary plat, PPL twenty dash thirty-six, to create lots A through L of Mills Ranch subdivision. The Board did approve this layout plan on October sixth, two thousand twenty. Uh, the lot sizes will range from five acres to approximately nine acres. Um, this was routed around through the interdepartmental review process. Um, there was one comment that came back from the register of deeds that they would prefer the lot I not be used, um, because it's often mistaken for number one. However, South Dakota codified law eleven dash three dash three requires sequential numbering of lots. Um, the planning commission did approve this preliminary plat with eight conditions. They did remove one condition that they felt was similar, uh, in nature. Uh, so staff is recommending approval and planning commission with eight conditions.
And that, one of those conditions is the fire mitigation or that's just a given?
We're gonna have to add it.
No, that is actually in there. So when it says that you have to meet all of the requirements of the subdivision regulations, um, the fire mitigation plan is a portion of the subdivision regulations.
Okay. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskin.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Sorry, discussion, sorry.
Brittany, I might be a little confused, but if we denied the subdivision variance-
So what happens?
On the fire mitigation plan, then that wouldn't be included in this. We need to include it in this.
Uh, so what it says is, um, no, let me see. Which condition?
He tried to get out of that condition. Commissioner Roskin, he tried to get out of that condition?
Okay, Holly's got it right.
Okay, yeah, so, um, number seven addresses that.
So basically, he put that on to try to get out of that condition. And if he would've, we would've had to take it off there.
Gotcha.
So we have a motion by Roskin, next, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Who were approved on your preliminary plat, Mr. Grover? Thank you, sir. Next is executive session, SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash one, and annual department head reviews.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Moved by Drews for going into executive session.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I might say I, okay, so I'll just drive my nuts till they quit. Let's come out of executive session. Second. Executive session, I think one on one.
Yep. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Morrow, Penning County Human Resources. So I've got a couple of motions I'd like to propose for your review and approval. Um, the first is this.